Okay, we should be good.
Welcome, everyone. It's April 13, 2021. We are at our regular city council meeting. The time is 7:06 PM. We've just completed two pre-council workshops, one about the budget, the other with a legislative update. We're now at our regular city council meeting. I will call this meeting to order, so please take us through a roll call attendance of the attendees that are with us currently.
Okay, we have City Manager Joel Linares, Mayor Emily Nihouse, Mila Dunbar Erwin, our Sustainability Director, Ben Billingsley, our Finance Director, Red Edge, Chief of Police, Carly Castle, Deputy City Manager, Kalen Jones, Moab City Council, Karen Guzman Newton, Moab City Council, Lori Simonsen, City Attorney, Mike Duncan, Moab City Council, Ronnie Duresary, Moab City Council, and Toni Knudson Boyd, City, Moab City Council.
Thank you so much for going through that for us. We are at Section 4, but I would like to just go ahead and entertain Section 4, Citizens to be Heard, Section 5, Public Hearing, 5.1, Vehicular Noise, and 5.2, Our Proposed Ordinance 2021-08, Amending Our Sewer Rates. So for the sanity of all individuals concerned, Summer, I'd like to go ahead and invite you to bring into our Zoom Brady Bunch window all folks that are currently signed in to be heard. Once they're in, then I will address them all. How many do we have? Several.
We had eight in the waiting room, but I do have Les who is here for a different agenda item. So I was just going to put him back in the waiting room.
That's what I would do, yes. And while you're bringing people into the Zoom call, I do want to just address. Give me just one second. I'm gonna pull up if I can. Oh, gosh. Okay, here we go. I just want to report out that we have, under our electronic participation for this evening, we've received, under Citizens to be Heard, we've received four comments, under General Citizens to be Heard. Under our public hearing comments, we've received one, two, three, four, five comments regarding the public hearing regarding noise, and we have received zero electronic comments for the public hearing for sewer rates. Summers, are those the numbers you have as well?
Those are the numbers that I have. I do have in the citizens to be heard, there are a couple that are related to noise and sewer rates. So form-wise, they just came in on a different form.
Okay, but they're technically citizens to be heard because that's their.
That's the form that they have, yeah.
Okay, well, excellent, and we've brought everybody in that appears to want to speak. So welcome, folks, to our city council meeting. Please state your name. When I call on you, please state your name, and I will just call on you using the label that's on your video screen, but state your name. State why you're calling in, if it is for general citizen to be heard, or for public hearing vehicular noise, or public hearing proposed ordinance on the change of sewer rates. And I would like to know if you are, in fact, a resident of the city of Moab, if that's all right as well. And we will start here with Dan Kent.
And Mayor, did you want to mention how much time each speaker has?
Two minutes. So on our agenda, it is noticed that people coming, zooming in, will be allotted two minutes. Based on the number of people zoomed in, I'm not worried about it. So I'm sure you'll all be respectful of that time limit. Dan Kent, you're up. Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot for including me. I try to stay quiet most of the time because I've been talking so much to you guys for so long, but I really appreciate the direction that you're heading. You've done a great job of trying to find many different ways to combat the noise that's invading our town. And I don't know that we can do much with it because we've got so many motel rooms now, the cat's out of the bag on the internet with Moab, so it may be hard to suppress, but I think you're doing a knock-up job of trying all the avenues. I really appreciate the mayor taking out some of the legislators on a boat. I think that's one of the best ways to get people to understand the silence that you can experience here in Moab, so I really appreciate that. I just think we should keep trying everything we can and keep in mind that, you know, we don't need to be roundabout, like the Republican politicians seem to like to be. I'm actually a registered Republican and I appreciate a lot of the conservative agenda, but I don't appreciate the tricky politics. And I think we should just keep directly going at it, and in every way we can, combat this invasion by noisy ORVs and the destruction of our small-town way of life. And the best way to do that is to just keep at every creative way that we can, but keep in mind that the idea is we're gonna get rid of these things on our city streets and we're gonna stop the damage. And if that means eliminating them from public lands, that is the ultimate goal. Education, though, and getting user groups to be responsible are super important, so I hope that you guys continue to work those avenues as well. But please go full force with everything you can discover and beef up the Moab City Police Force. I hope that I can help in any way that you ask.
Oh, thank you for your comments tonight. Next up, we have Kent Green. Welcome, Kent.
Okay, can you hear me now? I was waiting to speak on the noise thing. Is this the time to do it, or?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I just, you know, again, I appreciate all the hard work you folks do and stuff. And I know it is a very touchy situation, and obviously, you know where I stand on the issue, but we can all work together. You know, I really wanna really state that, you know, work with the businesses. We're not the root of the problem. And we're actually the educators out there, and on the noise decimals, I know Mike has been talking about it. You know, these machines already meet a standard when they come out in the manufacturer, so your noise decimals should meet that requirement, but not have it so low that you can't even enforce your own noise ordinances. But, you know, there's a lot of groups out there, Mayor, as you know, that's willing to help you. And I encourage you to get in contact with some of those people, and if you need help from me, I would be more than happy to help the city council on that. But we can all come together. It's not where we need to eliminate it, like the last gentleman said, and I understand his passion that he likes quietness, and so do I, but they're not going anywhere, so we just need to figure out a way how to come to a happy medium and just work together. And I've been watching your meetings, and thank you for your professionalism again, folks, you know, so you guys do really well. I'm excited to see things happen, but I know I'm just kinda rambling on here, but just take it up. Take a side and work with the outfitters. Please do not restrict them so much that they can't even operate their businesses. And I would encourage you to get more involved with the outfitters, have them come to you or you go up to them. And let's work this out, you know, on our, because we're not the problem. And so we need, we need to, you know, we're community members here, too, and we enjoy Moab. Thank you, Emily.
Kent, I don't want to be out of turn, and this is so unlike me, you can ask any one of my council members, this is very unlike me to do this during a citizen to be heard or public hearing, but I just need to ask you a very specific question. As an outfitter, what is your take on the document before you, the noise ordinance that we're reviewing tonight?
Well, I have some concerns, you know, I'm just, I just, I, I like to hear it from the horse's mouth, does that make sense? I like to come together and be able to talk about things, not necessarily debate it, but, you know, limiting outfitters, capping their equipment, you know, that's just not right because, you know, there are a lot of other outfitters, you know, that could be involved, and it could eventually go after. You know, we abide by all the rules and regulations, business license. I would like the opportunity, and I know you've told me this before, I would like to have the opportunity to be able to sell my business, but yet know the person who is going to buy it is going to be able to operate. And if they choose to move to a commercial area, I would like to see that happen, you know, a commercial-zoned area within the city. And, I mean, we could, you know, I try to, you know, and a lot of outfitters do, too, try to minimize less impact on the neighborhoods as possible. I really do, and so do a lot of other outfitters, but a lot of our streets have commercial zone properties all along through there. And so I try not to just pick one street, you know, so, thank you. I know I'm rambling. Go ahead.
I encourage you to stick with us, and at the end, the last item on our agenda, Karen's laughing because I'm always picking on her for not unmeeting. I encourage you to stick around or zoom back in and/or watch later the dialogue, the discussion that we have later tonight about this noise ordinance. Thank you.
I will. Thank you so much.
Okay, next up, we have Jessica Fessler. Welcome to our meeting.
Hi, I actually wasn't trying to speak. I was just trying to observe, but I apologize. I'm totally unprepared to come in with comment at this point. Is it okay that I walked, like, the discussion?
Yes, and what you might find to be more helpful is just if you go to moabcity.org, actually, if you go to YouTube, and then you search for Moab City, you'll find our page. We're streaming live on YouTube, so it's actually an easier way for you to follow because you can pause and you can kinda have a more relaxed participation if you follow us on YouTube. So we'll take you off the Zoom, and thanks for participating in our meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got a caller here with an area code 201. I'm not sure what that area code is, but you are welcome to speak.
So this is Cliff Koons, Executive Director of Ride With Respect, and also Chair of the Grand County Motorized Trails Committee.
Hi, Cliff, welcome. Thanks for calling in.
Thank you, and thanks to Lori for taking an hour to go through her draft with the Motorized Trails Committee last week. We do have some remaining concerns about the document. We feel that the main help would be in the stationary sound testing, following very precisely the different SAE tests and levels that we suggest because they've worked in other places. And then, you know, if the year passes and there are not enough, we couldn't, should revisit it. But currently, the document talks about 92 decibels, doesn't actually specify the method, but just 20 inches, and that's gotta be more clear, and it needs to be a different method for each type of vehicle. And for each of these methods, you know, 92 isn't necessarily the right amount. It just so happens for UTVs by J1287, it is, but it's, you need to refer back to the MTC letter from March 15th that spells it out. Don't rely on the EPA label for motorcycles. I want it to be very clear that that's not even remotely correlated to the sound levels that you're gonna get out of thousands of bikes. True that the stationary sound testing isn't perfect either, but it's a lot closer because you're actually measuring the sound and not simply the stamp on a bike that may or may not have been modified. The other part, so you got your 25-foot pass-by test in the 80 decibels, and that's perfectly fine for screening to do the stationary test, but it shouldn't be relied upon without the stationary, and so we'd appreciate it if you'd specify that you're not planning on using that for prosecution because it's just going to be a mess to do so, especially if you haven't spelled out the further methodology there. And the final thing is to say that on your receiving residential lots at the property line, you know, numbers as low as 50 or 60 decibels, those, you find typically when you're talking about a duration over several minutes, if not hours, as an average, like LEQ. And if it's specific to a moment in time, as it, as the draft portrays, then that's rather strict. And so I hope that during your agenda item, you can clarify if that was intended to be something like LEQ. Otherwise, perhaps it was intended to exclude motor vehicles going down the street because they're already covered by these other tables and standards. So in conclusion, thank you for your first shot at this, but please continue working with us on the exact threshold because we want to support something, but it needs to be carefully done. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Cliff, for your advocacy for your group. Thank you for reading the noise ordinance that's being proposed tonight. Thank you for meeting with Lori, our City Attorney, for, to interpret the documents. Very appreciative. Thank you. And thanks for zooming in. I know it's not always fun. Let's see, I saw that there was an 801 area code. Somebody called in. Summer, did we lose them?
It looks like we lost them.
Okay, are there any other citizens out there that are wanting to be brought in?
I don't have anyone else in the waiting room.
Gosh. I'm a bit surprised. Well, I'm grateful for those that have zoomed in, and I'm grateful for those that have written to us. We certainly have received a lot of feedback, not through this particular public hearing channel or citizens to be heard, but certainly through email and calls and others, so big thank you to the community that has reached out. All right, well, seeing that we have no other folks for comments, we will move on to item number six, Administrative Reports. Joel, you are up as our City Manager on 61, with updates from you. Take it away.
So, thank you, Mayor. We're going to have the City Recorder Summer Johnson, City Engineer Chuck Williams, and Chief Edge give some updates real quick, and then I will jump back on, and so we'll start with Summer.
Look, I have a face. It's not just an orange block. Hello, everybody. So the mayor asked me to pop on and give an update on ranked choice voting, and I had a great conversation with Audrey Wood and Corey Holdaway from Ranked Choice Voting Utah. They would like to come and give a presentation to you all during our budget workshop next Tuesday at 6:00 PM. They've got some great information. There, like Casey said, there are some deadlines. If you guys are interested in going with ranked choice voting for the election this year, we have to notify the Lieutenant Governor's Office by May 10. So the purpose of having them present early would be to give you some information so you can go back and think about whether or not it's something that you want to do. And then if it is something we're interested in, we'll bring back a resolution to you that you could pass at your April, or not pass, at your April 27 meeting. And that way, we can determine which direction we want to go as far as the election is concerned. And Audrey did provide a great fact sheet, but I'm just gonna forward to you guys just on ranked choice voting. If you have any questions as far as that's concerned, we talked about a lot of the logistics and how that could possibly work, and they will have a team ready for us to, or for you guys to ask questions if you can think of anything that you need to ask her about.
Mike?
Summer, quick question for, on the assumption that the county clerk's office does the election tally, just like they always have? Are they, do they have the tools and stuff that they need to do ranked choice voting?
They actually have not really been interested in participating, but the state legislature actually allowed in other cities or other counties in Utah to help run a ranked choice voting election. And in the meeting that I had with them on Friday, there were a couple of individuals from Utah County that would be willing to run our election for us. Now, everything would actually go through us. The ballots would come to us. They have some software, they have a laptop and some software that we would scan the ballots into them and then get that information to them for counting, if that is the route we choose to go, if our county does not want to run the ranked choice voting election.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And, and Summer, just also, in terms of cost of election. So the county, while they may be very excited about doing ranked choice voting, they don't have software, other infrastructure to be able to operate it, whereas Utah County does. And the cost of running our election through Utah County might be less than running through Grand County. Is that correct?
That was the information that they provided in the meeting on Friday.
Yeah, it's possible we could implement ranked choice voting for the city and spend less money. And it's not that we don't want to, you know, work with the county here. Of course, we'd love to. It's just the county is strapped with not having that software and that infrastructure to do ranked choice voting. So we're bringing it toward, to the council, and thank you, Summer, for that update, and especially the timing. And also, I forgot to close the public hearing, which I will do so right now. The public hearing is closed. Sorry, and thank you, Summer, for zooming in. Do I need a motion to close public hearing? I think I do, don't I? Toni?
Well, Mayor, you didn't open the public hearing, so there's nothing to close, but you're not required to make a motion to open and close a public hearing. You complied with what we needed to do for the public hearing, so.
But just to make a fine point on it, Toni, can I get a motion to close public hearing?
You may.
Thank you.
I made a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second? Somebody second it for me. Thank you, Karen. All those in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Messy on Zoom, why not? It's like ketchup dripping on a hot dog.
You did what you needed to do. You invited the public to speak. You allowed the public to speak. They had their time. We're good.
All right, okay, back to administrative reporting. Chuck is up, I believe. Messy like a hot dog with ketchup.
There you go. Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to talk to you about the speed limits. Couple council meetings before ago, council members were asking about the status of our speed limits in the city, and I prepared some documents, which I sent you earlier this week. Just wanted to briefly review this. One map contains a lot of information on it, but quickly, it's color-coded, and you can see that we have about three, up here is the legend, about three miles of roads that are supposed to have a speed limit of 30, about five miles of roads that are posted.
Are you intending to share your screen right now?
I am.
Screen is not shared.
How about that now?
Now we are shared.
Thank you. They got in a hurry. Speed limit 30 is about three miles, a speed limit 25, about five miles, a speed limit 20, about 11 miles, and about eight and a half miles of roads that are not posted. That's, those are color-coded. This is a map with this being the city boundary here. Functionally classified roads, those are roads, that's a federal designation, and those are the roads that are meant to provide connectivity between neighborhoods and residential areas and commercial centers. And they're considered to be arterials or collectors, and those are the roads that were eligible to get federal funding dollars on more often than not. And so those are the turquoise roads here. So as an example, 500 West is a functionally classified road, and 400 East is as well. And then also contained here, just drawn in, we, to show that the functionally classified roads have a higher usage rate, here's an example of a traffic count of an average daily traffic of 3,761 cars per day, and that's at 100 North near Main Street. And over here at Mill Creek and 400 East, it's, our busiest roads are at about 8,000 cars per day. Whereas in some of the roads that are posted at 20 miles an hour, we don't have traffic counts on every road, but we collect a lot of traffic count data. The roads' numbers are typically between 200 and 500 cars per day versus the functionally classified ones that have the higher volumes. And I'd also like to, now do you see the speed limit? My PowerPoint, Mayor? The change screen. Real quick, there is a state basis for speed limits, and a municipality may determine reasonable and safe speed limits for each highway, they call them, but it's each road in our jurisdiction. And, but if we do so, each speed limit shall be established in accordance with these rules, and I won't go into all of those. However, what it means is that each speed limit shall be based on a traffic engineering and safety study. And those methods are outlined in the manual in Unified Traffic Control Devices, and it's an engineering study performed by an engineer. And what it really kind of boils down to, and you know, Lori hasn't had a brief conversation with me, and I had a brief conversation with the chief, and so I'm not, I'm not giving legal advice here, but my interpretation and practice that I've experienced throughout my career is that in Utah, the prima facia, or the speed limit that's given, if there's not an engineering study done to determine a speed limit, is 20 miles per hour in a reduced-speed school zone. And I think we're all pretty used to that. In a school zone, speed limits are 20 generally in Utah. However, it's 25 miles per hour in any urban district, and here's the definition of an urban district, but essentially, the entire city would qualify as an urban district, except the new Sintla lands don't have the density of road, there's no roads up there except for Aggie Boulevard. So 25 miles an hour would be the prima facia speed limit if an engineering study wasn't done. And as you can see, about 60% of our roads in the city right now are posted at 20, about 7% at 30. But there are ways that we could, if the council wanted to address this, we could perhaps have a work session, we could come up with some ideas that I've got to discuss that with you, such as a citywide's speed limit unless otherwise posted. There's potentially ways to do that. And yet, at the same time, give our functionally classified roads, the roads that need to move traffic, the right speed limit. So with that, that's all I had to share. I just wanted to get back with you, let you know that we're available to pursue this further if council wants to.
Chuck, this is awesome. So will you share that map? Will you share those documents with this council, please?
I did send the map to council. I did not send the PowerPoint to council. I will, yes.
Yes. I just, I mean, I haven't received anything.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll resend it. I sent it last week.
I don't think I got anything either. I wrote myself a note to check, but I don't think I got anything either, Chuck.
Okay, it might have been too large of a file. I will definitely send them out this evening.
And so I think direction to staff would be, so we're very interested in this. Chuck, especially with having just had a conversation about $560,000 that we might have to spend on infrastructure. What, how quickly can you put together an agenda summary and workshop for us?
I understand next week's not a good time for you, but the following week, we could be ready for that.
Oh. Yeah, I wasn't expecting out of a council meeting.
I'm sorry. At the next council meeting.
Next council meeting?
Yes.
Let's do this. Will you add it to the spreadsheet? Let's do it.
Okay.
And just, just in case, we, I know we have budget that next council meeting as well, so maybe bump one more depending on if there's other workshops that may have a higher priority, but it's there, right?
Yeah, okay. All right, Chuck, awesome. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
What was the other? Chief, yes. Chief and dramatic, delicate arch.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to share a few things with you this evening. Everything that I have to talk about is staffing-related, and I wanted to let you know that we did interviews last week for our open police office. let you know that we did interviews last week for our open police officer positions. We had twenty-seven or twenty-eight applications. We set up fourteen interviews. Out of that, we had thirteen candidates who did interview with us. Several exceptional candidates. We offered, made offers to seven police officers and out of those five were almost immediately accepted. One has declined and we're still waiting to hear from one back. And then an eighth is, has also applied for the assistant chief position and is very interested in that. So we're doing the, the interviews for the assistant chief position next week. We've got, again, some, some really exceptional candidates. I'm confident that out of just the, the batch that we interviewed for the police officer position and for the assistant chief, that we're going to get some, some really solid employees out of that. So the positions are both still open. We do still continue to get applications on about every other day and some good ones. So if we don't get what we need out of the last batch of interviews with police officer, for the police officer position, then we'll, we'll do another batch of interviews. So thanks for looking up in that regard. Last year, I think toward the end of the year, I, I shared some statistics with you about other comparable agencies throughout the, primarily the West and what their staffing levels look like. And so I wanted to go over some of that with you again, just to, to refresh your, your memory. I did some research to look at other police departments and jurisdictions that are similar to Moab as far as roughly the same population with similar tourist economies. And found that compared to us, most of them have a fairly substantial, substantially larger police officer staff. Some of them also have more civilian staff as well. So the next closest agency that I found from a staffing, police officer staffing perspective was Seaside, Oregon with twenty police officers. They've got a, a population of about sixty-eight hundred. And then from there it goes up to, the, the largest one was Park City with thirty-three police officers. Many of these agencies are also running part-time programs, which we have started. We, we have now three part-time officers. We're allocated for five. We're, we're still trying to fill those other two and, and those part-time positions will absolutely help with some of the staffing issues. But we do, we do need to fill more full-time spots. The, the city that I found that I, I think is probably most comparable to Moab, not only because they're a fellow Red Rock Canyon country type place, but because their visitation is very similar, would be Sedona, Arizona. Their population is ten to, ten to eleven thousand for their, kind of their stable city population, but they also have about three million visitors per year, very similar to us. It's very recreation focused. And Sedona has twenty-seven sworn officers. They have twenty-some-odd volunteers and then several part-time officers. So, you know, comparatively, we're, we're behind the curve. Any questions? I don't want to, there's more stats. I don't want to bore you to death with, with stats, but if there's any specific questions that you have, I'd be happy to answer those.
So, let's do Karen and then Ronnie.
Chief, so I apologize. So our staff at this point in time is at what level?
We're allocated for seventeen full-time.
And we have how many?
We are at, I think, eleven, twelve right now.
Okay. And then the volunteer staff that is in Sedona, like how, what does that consist of? I mean, how does, how does that work?
I haven't been able to get a lot of information about it, but I know that they use them for traffic control on busy weekends. They do use them for like filing a lot of the office, or not a lot, some of the office type things, so data entry, paperwork, et cetera. But I, I'm not real sure how they use all of them. And they're all non-sworn. They're civilian, you know, no, no law enforcement training at all.
Got it.
Ronnie?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I had a question about the volunteers too, so thanks for answering that. I'll just add. So if we had eleven or twelve now and five seem to be taking up offers, that's sixteen or seventeen, right? Maybe with the addition of someone applying to the assistant chief. And it's my impression that a lot of these people have been through post, right? So it's probably a matter of months for them to kind of show up and get on board and find housing and stuff. I mean, where do you think it's realistic for, for them to be on the, be on the street?
It's a really good question. One, one of the individuals graduates post, he, he's a, he's self-sponsored and put himself through the academy. He lives here now. He graduates post next week and then it takes us about two or three weeks to get through the background investigation. Maybe another week to complete the rest of it. So realistically, we, we expect that we should be able to have him in field training sometime mid-May. The other ones are all out of town. They, the, the all, but I think one are currently sworn officers. Most of them have fairly substantial experience levels, which means that their training time will be reduced. Usually the field training for, for a brand-new officer with no experience, even if they're coming in with a certification, but they've never been a cop, the, the field training is a minimum of twelve weeks. For someone coming in who has been a cop and has a few years of experience, that's, that can be reduced to somewhere between six to eight weeks. So it's, it's much more efficient to, to bring in laterals with experience than it is to either send someone to the academy or to even bring someone in who is certified but has no experience. Of course, we would, if it were up to me, we would hire nothing but, you know, people who are already sworn laterals. You know, you, you get, it typically takes the, the general thought process is if you have to bring someone in who is a brand-new cop, you, it takes about two years before they are really effective on the street in, in a solo capacity. So if you can bring someone in who already has two, three or more years of experience, you go through a six-to-eight-week FTO and then you have a fully functioning qualified officer who's ready to go right, you know, right after eight weeks generally max. Saves the, the city a lot of money to, to be able to do that. It, it costs on average about forty-three thousand dollars to send a cadet through the academy and get them through the training. So if we can bring in laterals, it's a significant cost savings. It's a, it's a much more efficient and, you know, savings of, of our time and, and effort as well.
I guess just to add to that, just out of curiosity, I know it's a hard time to hire nationwide, so I guess my first question was, did we just get lucky? Because it does seem like we got a, a good pool of people. Obviously, we have a great place to live, but that's exciting. And the second thing was just for you and Joel, maybe if you could give us a reminder for the budget before us, is that covering the current seventeen officers or an increase? And if we couldn't get to twenty-seven, I take it anything less than that would be good. But, you know, we get those constant questions from residents about like, you know, what would it take? You know, to see more enforcement? And I don't know if that's something you can answer, but I guess that's my second question.
Well, I'll go ahead and answer that one, Brett. That currently the budget reflects the seventeen officers that have been approved in the past. The chief has been green lighted to hire more officers, but we've budgeted for seventeen because we've never hit seventeen. It's been that way in the past and there was no point in putting a bunch of money in a budget that we've never hit the number in the past. So we have approved it. We have the money in our savings basically sitting there. And if we can get to the nineteen number, twenty number, then we'll do a budget opening and we'll move the money out of our ready date fund into the budget at that point. But currently it's, it's budgeted to match exactly where we're at, because we've never hit that number before.
And does the seventeen include the two, maybe the traffic officers? Sorry, I'm probably not using the right language that we had talked about.
No, no, seventeen will get, will staff our investigations and patrol to a, you know, quote-unquote, full staff. It, it still wouldn't be where we ideally need to be to be as proactive as, as I would like to be. But that, that's kind of your, your basic law enforcement. Excuse me, your basic law enforcement functions. Anything above and beyond seventeen, we could start looking to add additional traffic, canine, school resource, you know, basically extra functionalities and, and units. I, I will add to what Joel said that, you know, ideally, I think we need to be somewhere between twenty-five and thirty. I'm, I'm, I'm not so delusional to think that, you know, a bag of cash is going to get dropped on the desk and we're going to be able to hire ten more tomorrow. But I, I think the, the appropriate way to go about it would be to say for the next, you know, five years, we're going to add two officers every budget year. And, you know, realistically, from a hiring perspective, that'll be a lot easier for us. And from a budget perspective, I think it'll, it's a lot more realistic to expect that we, we add officers over a period of time rather than all at one time. We're small enough that, you know, hi- hiring five or six right now is going to be challenging for our field training officers because we only have three. So how, how are we going to have, how are we going to train six officers when we only have three trainers? You know, luckily it'll be kind of staggered, so I don't think it'll present a huge issue. But, you know, those, these are things that we have to consider at a smaller agency, that larger agencies who have, you know, fifty training officers, it's just not an issue for them.
Okay, great. And I guess my, just my last thing was, is there anything that extra that we or the community could do to support you guys? I know you're getting, you know, support. You work with the sheriff's department and highway patrol, but we also know that you guys are, you know, low on numbers right now. So I guess let us know if there's something.
We will. Thank you.
Quick question, Brett. Of the five who accepted, are they cognizant of the difficulties of, and expenses of finding housing here?
Yes, they are. And that's going to be the challenge. I, I expect that, you know, we, we offered five positions. I don't think we're going to fill them all. We, they're all five exceptional. I would love to have all five. But, you know, the reality is that it's expensive to live here. It's difficult to live here. And there, there just isn't a lot of housing available, even if somebody walked in with the money. So, you know, my, my guess is that they, we've got these five who have accepted. One of them already lives here. The other four are all from out of town. And they will probably start looking and, you know, we'll, I, I'm, I'm betting that we'll probably have a couple of those wash out due to housing.
Thank you.
And then when that happens, we'll go back to the pool and do it again.
Yes, we will.
We've gone back and forth until we get the number we need. We explained to all candidates across the city when we interview to this level, how hard it is. We go over housing with them. We provide them resources as ways they can try and gain housing once they decide they are moving here. So it's not a normal interview process when we interact with people where you offer the job and they sign on. And then you see in the first day they show up, we're pretty proactive of making sure people have resources to get here. And as Ben can attest, to make sure you have a place to sleep the first night you get to town.
Absolutely. You guys have been great. And I can attest to the difficulty of, of the relocation process, so.
All right. Any other questions for the chief? Kaylin?
So there's a, obviously a, a national discussion going on about their role of policing and various aspects around that. I just wondered in terms of your interviewing with them, has that been Moab's leadership's attitude around that? It have been an issue at all? And also, I'm just wondering if you could have been able to convey the support that I think this council has for our police department? And if not, anything that we can do to help with that? It's a great question, Kaylin, and I have conveyed that to our existing staff. And I have also made sure that our applicants are aware of the support that we have from the community, from city administration council and the mayor. You know, I, I think the Moab Police Department and, you know, I don't want to speak for someone else, but I'm sure it's the same way for the sheriff's office and, and local highway patrol. But I feel, I feel really fortunate that we have so much community support. You know, you, you see areas like Portland and some other areas of, of the nation that just don't really seem to have it. And we are very fortunate that we have so many people in the community who are very supportive and they tell us that they're supportive. You know, they, they catch us on the street. They buy us lunch. They are bringing in donuts, you know. And so we, we're constantly reminded that we, we do have the community support and that's, it's absolutely vital. With, with the, the recent interviews that we did, I completely reworked the interview questions. We, you know, the, the previously, the interview questions were very, for lack of a better word, they were very, you know, kind of law enforcement focused and, and they were designed to find cops. And, you know, well, the, the positions that we're trying to fill are police officer positions, but I wanted the questions to be a lot more human being focused. I, I, I want to find people who are, are just damn good human beings. Anybody can be trained to be, not anybody. You can train people to be a cop. I want to find people who are exceptional human beings that want to do this job for the right reason. So we, we undertook the process of completely revamping all of the interview questions and some of them were very non-traditional. And I, you know, my hope is that it'll, it would give us a better idea of, of who we're interviewing and, and what their motivations are. But that it would also tell them, we're a little different. You know, we're not LAPD. We're not Salt Lake PD. We're, we're looking for a different type of candidate. So, you know, yes, the, the answer to your question is yes. We did convey that we do have much more community support and the, the questions that we're asking are, you know, designed to give us better perspective on the, the, kind of the humanity of the people we're, we're looking at.
That is awesome. Thank you so much, Brett.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Brett? Okay, we'll move on. Thanks so much. Let's see, Joel, any other reports?
Yeah, a couple real quick. I want to introduce Mila Dunbar Erwin. She is popping on right now. She started Monday with the city as our new sustainability director. And we are really excited to have her. Carly has been doing that as a side gig to her normal responsibilities for about the last year and three months and has done an excellent job and want to thank Carly for all the time she's put into that. And she's done a really good job doing that on top of her normal duties and keeping it going forward. So we're really excited to have Mila and look forward to her interacting and working with all of you guys. And I don't know if Mila wants to say anything. She doesn't have to. She's welcome to.
I just thank you so much for your vote of confidence. I'm really excited to join the team at the city and work towards sustainability in Moab. It's going to be great.
Awesome. Welcome, Mila.
Thank you.
Yeah, and any, any other updates?
Yes, real quick. I'll be quick. We interviewed for our Parks, Rec and Trails Director position. We have an offer out for that. I'm hoping to be able to make an announcement there next week. We did restructure those departments quite a bit to refocus on trails and also to shore up some gray areas that fell in between those different departments and try and tie them together. So hopefully some of that. I want to thank UDOC and McGrann Johnson for the last two weekends of really working to get four lanes open in both directions to prevent backups during the holiday season across the bridge coming into town and people waiting to get out of town on Sunday. I know that they had people out Saturday night last weekend and basically in the middle of the night outputting down lanes so we could get two lanes out of town again to make it work. And they have really worked with the city, even though it's not our project and they don't have to listen to anything we say and they could totally tell us we're not listening to you. I do want to thank them for the efforts they put in the last couple of weeks in order to make it so the traffic could flow in and out of town. COVID-19 update real quick. City halls open to public appointments. But for our, our, appointments are set by appointment, so please call in if you want to meet with someone directly. Otherwise, you can always call by phone. The mask order has ended for the state of Utah. It has been continued through Grand County through the middle of June. So please continue to wear your mask. Please continue to comply with the order from the health department and the county. And keep pushing forward to we get towards a different phase of this new normal we all live in. So thank you.
And look very forward to the day after your second dose. I felt like I was hit my truck.
Yeah.
So Mary, if I may, Mila, if you're still around, I just want to tell you that we've been talking water and already have a job for you. Basically, it's an estimating how much additional water will be required by new hotels and developments that are already online. For example, Lions Back and, and other hotels and so forth. Because the bottom line on all is we may be essentially tapped out. Because the bottom line on it all is we may be essentially tapped out on the main aquifer that supplies the city's culinary water. And so safe yield gets in the act. And so there's a lot of people have asked, how much additional water are we basically already committed to in addition to what we're already withdrawing? And that would be a great starter project for yourself, in my opinion. So I hope you can, I hope you're enthused by that idea.
I'm definitely jumping right into the water question, for sure.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to share anything with Mila while we've got her? Ronnie?
Oh, I was just going to say, welcome. And we're excited to be working with you. And I was going to ask maybe you or Marie has more a question for Joel. Joel, I imagine Mila needs some time to get oriented. But should we expect at some point her to kind of report to us on, I don't know, focus or something or have a little Q and A? Or do you recommend that we meet with her individually? I mean, I figure we should.
I've already talked to Mila about the fact that she will have a lot of interaction with council and this position is very council-driven. And that I think she plans on having some meetings with you guys already anyway. So we're more than happy to have a group meeting and we're more than happy. And she will always, will always do the report like we do admin reports and council meetings. But you're all more than welcome to meet with her one-on-one as well.
Great. I mean, we really, our first main meeting is going to be when Mila brings forth the revised sustainability plan, right? So that is utmost critical concern. We've got a plan from yesterday. We want to plan for tomorrow. So we want to, I think that our first meeting with you, Mila, will be a review and your recommendations for the sustainability plan moving forward. Right?
Yeah, that sounds great. And I would love to chat with everybody, you know, whenever there's a chance. This is the end of my second day. So I haven't exactly had time to rewrite the sustainability plan yet, but it's on the way.
It's okay. It's only Tuesday. No, welcome to the team. Very grateful.
Thank you.
Okay, Joel, unless there's anything else, moving right along. Okay. Next on our agenda is our mayor and council reports. And I will go first. The meetings I attended, Water Quality Board meeting, Southeast Canadian Association of Local Governments meeting. I did a KZMU proclamation for their birthday and also hosted John Curtis for some ice cream. Very grateful to Representative John Curtis for continuing to come to Moab, continuing to interact. Joel got to zip line with him. You failed to mention that update. But he really was focused on public lands. It was the county that hosted him this time around. So, and it was during spring break, so it was hard for, I think, some of us to connect with him, but still, he came and continues to come to visit us. And for that, I will always be very grateful. And just a few, like, admin updates from me. We're continuing to move forward with the Moab app. Hope to have a launch soon, soft launch, so that you can all play in the app before it goes live. Also, like I mentioned earlier, the, we've received, you know, inquiry about medical marijuana. And so we are, as a city, open to being that 15 license designation, as we talked about before. It's just important for it to be on our radar. And if you have any questions about that, you can call Joel to get more information about that. Also, lots going on with UDOT, but Rick and Monte were willing to come down and have a meeting with a company, the CEO of the company, Blinksey, to talk about traffic metering. So we know that we're coming to the end of this highway widening project. And we all know that the congestion has been quite hard. And we do know that it's been a very big deal and we're coming to the end of it. And so it's going to be important for us to continue to analyze the data of our traffic, especially around conversation, bypass. We've said, you know, is this traffic moving through or is this traffic coming and staying here in Moab? What is our congestion really coming from? And, and so we've got to get better data. UDOT has some, but there's, there's more data to be had. So I guess this is just also seeding with all of you council, the interest that I have in doing better by having better data and being more organized. And like I said earlier with the legislative group, that software is the new asphalt, that perhaps we can get a little more organized without having to, you know, build more lanes. So I just wanted to share some of that information. And there was something, oh, and then I'm still serving on the Housing Commission Rural Subcommittee. And update, I want to update all of you that the legislature did allocate $500,000 for rural money, pre-development money. So projects that have not put a shovel in the ground, that need $50,000, up to $50,000 boost to get going. Developers that are interested in building low income, they don't necessarily have to be a nonprofit developer. And it's possible that Walnut Lane could qualify for this funding as well. So please do share with anybody that you've spoken to about building housing, affordable housing in Moab or in other gateway communities, as we do have friends that, you know, that are in other communities, that there's funding out there that's available, that's competitive and it's for rural. So it's amazing. That's it for me. And next up is Ronnie.
Okay, I will try to make it fast. I have exciting, we have.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh, Ronnie? You have frozen. Do not let it go. Ronnie, you are frozen. I don't know that she can hear us. Let's give it a minute, second, few seconds. Did anyone catch my frozen records? Let it go.
I can do mine. We'll come back to her.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, Sarah Stock on County Council made me aware of.
Oh, sorry, she's back.
I'm sorry, my house was bad and so I was connected to my phone, but boy, sometimes you just can't win with either. I don't want to, should I let Mike keep going?
No, he just said Sarah Stock and you came back, so.
So at any rate, yeah, so hopefully the rural EMS agencies will each be getting a good amount of money, one time, to help with some training, expansion, hiring. Sorry, not hiring, but anyway, make it easier to recruit more people and train more people. I did attend two, three days of a Water Now Alliance Water Summit. And as I've mentioned before, they've been a presenter at Utah League of Cities and Towns meetings. They do a lot of work on green infrastructure, different forms of infrastructure one can do to prepare, to just be smarter and use more technology. And I guess I'll say the main takeaways from those, there's a good keynote from the National League of Cities. And it's kind of interesting to hear from people all around the country. There has been more of a trend over time of people moving away from using their savings to pay for infrastructure, to actually bonding and using grants. So they had some good suggestions of places to look. I mean, they may not work for us, but I'm going to pass that on to Joel and Ben and Rachel. I'm just waiting for the workshop video to be shared. But at any rate, a lot of good discussions about lessons that people learned about water and water delivery in different communities around the country during COVID. Very big lessons about access and equity and the need to use technology moving forward and think smarter, especially with climate change. And some good points about how the expertise, the workforce in water and sewer is aging out. And so it's a great time for younger people who want a good career and who are interested in the integration of technology in those fields to get involved. Let's see, I missed the third day of that because I went to the semi-annual meeting of the Southeast Utah Repairian Partnership through an MOU. I'm a city rep on that. Lots of good information about all of the regeneration, restoration efforts. Those folks are doing everything from things, updates on what's happening with the tamarisk beetle, to very, very interesting work people are doing to get rid of non-native fragmites, for example, some of that in the parks and elsewhere, Revena grass. And it did drive to mind with me, the Grand County Weed Board will work with residents to get rid of some of these non-natives that you might have in your yard. And just so you know, in some cases, non-natives can be more of a fire hazard. So there are multiple good reasons to get them out of your yards. So I did.
We should call. What's the number that residents should call if they've got what they think is an invasive weed? Do you have that?
I don't have the Grand County Weed Board number up, but I can, I can look and find it for you, but it's on, yeah, the weed department, but it did.
On the county website, it's the, it's actually the weed department. It's not a board.
Oh, sorry.
Department of the county. And they will come help you remove the invasive species. They charge, but it's a much lower rate than if you had somebody else come in.
And actually, there have been some programs where you can actually get some money for a replacement plant. So, or at least that's the way they were talking the other day. I don't know if they've run out of those vouchers, but it did.
Yep, and I've got it up here, 259-1369.
And I will just say that it reminded me that, I'm not sure if we have city staff now, if we have a representative going to weed department meetings, but it's probably a good idea. And I'd just love to talk to Lisa or someone about how we can share some of their information to help educate residents about some of the things they shouldn't be planning. I mean, they're good in town here about not selling noxious weeds, but doesn't mean you aren't going to get them if you go get plants injunction. At any rate, I had a good meeting about water with Steve Getz and Mike Duncan and Sarah Stock. I'll let Mike talk about that. And I have put in a request that we all look at Mike's culinary water availability ordinance at our next meeting. Finally, just, I continue to get requests from the community about fire concerns. So I'd just like to make sure we're doing everything we possibly can to reduce any risk there. Obviously, we're all upset to see the fire in the sloughs, but if you know local firefighters, you know that, you know, we're already having unseasonably early, mostly human-caused fires across Utah. And so I just wanted to make sure we're doing everything we can to quellch anything that might contribute or any behavior. And I know it's a problem nationwide is just more people on their vaccine vacations, maybe not knowing what they're doing. And finally, thanks to you, Joel, for following up on my pothole concern over by the coffee center. If any of you are following that pothole. Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Actually, so Ronnie brings up a good, the Councilmember Duncan's water ordinance. Carly, is that a Mila thing? Is that a thing that we can, is that a you thing? Is that a, and can we, when, when, when are we reviewing it?
I guess there are a couple of ways we can kind of do it. We've sent it to our water lawyer for review and comment and analysis of it. He might come up with some alternate advice, a different, you know, different options. I think, I don't know if the council would prefer a general, like several options to choose from to ensure we're meeting water, our water obligations and not overextending ourselves. But that's what Jeff Gittens is, is working to do. So he's producing, I think, a memo for us about, about his thoughts on the approach and maybe some solutions and.
So maybe what we need is a deadline for presenting back to council the ordinance? What do you, what do you think is a reasonable?
Probably in May. I know Jeff had deadlines last week and I think it's this week that he's getting to, to the work.
Okay. Okay. And honestly, like, May 25th is budget close. So are we thinking, you know, Ronnie, Mike, how does that sound to you in terms of timing?
I'm going to let Mike weigh in. I mean, it seems pretty urgent to me, but I'm going to let, Mike knows more, so I'll let him.
It's too late, Carly. That's, that's my opinion. I'm trying to head this off with the past. Everybody who studies this thing is thinking that we've got very significant new commitments made on coming subdivisions and so forth. Unless somebody says, hey, we may have to put the brakes on our main aquifer. Not only just new appropriations or closing the area, but new withdrawals. It's a very big deal. And I don't want to find ourselves in the same position that Cedar City was 15 years ago, when they heavily overgrew their aquifer and they're going to take them 30 years, if ever, to make it up. I don't want that to happen here. So that's my opinion anyway. And so I don't want to keep putting it off. And surprisingly, I've gotten support from Mark Stillson to do something legislative about it sooner rather than later. That surprised me, all right? Because I kind of thought he would rather defer this to the groundwater management plan. The groundwater management plan is going to be essential for working out how we're going to honor our commitments. But I want to get the commitments in place and paper on, on an ordinance. And I would like to get that in council, in front of council, have everybody get used to this idea sooner rather than later.
Well, Carly said May and it is April 13th, so.
Oh, that's true.
We're in COVID, I think we're in COVID fog because May is like in a month.
Okay, I'll quit whining, but not too long, okay? Thank you.
Well, I think it's reasonable to say, you know, in a couple of meetings or, you know, like, three, three meetings, two meetings, what is, two meetings away would be mid-May. So.
Yeah, we certainly have the same goals. We just want to make sure it's legal and there are no unintended consequences.
Or there will be, there will be consequences, yes.
Unintended consequences. Don't want to happen.
Okay.
That's the goal and that's the work that Jeff is helping us do.
Okay.
Thanks, Ronnie, for the updates. Next is Mike. Mike, thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I've pretty much said everything I want to do. Carly, the only other thing I'll add, the way I wrote the ordinance, it gives you an out, all right? Because there's errors in the estimate for safe yield. So if you go one sigma up saying, hey, maybe we erred in too small an amount, you can say with, we could mitigate economic damage, as it were, in the short term by using that at council's discretion. So we'll talk more about that later on, but it's not a hard stop. I mean, the way I've got it written right now, it gives you some freedom to be more discretionary about it, but we'll talk about that later on.
Yeah, updates, other updates?
Yeah, I'm working on the noise man, my little roadside monitor. It's going pretty well. All the fun part's done, the turning microphone input into dB levels and so forth, but I'm having trouble with the tools. Been more hours than I want to talk about trying to get these stupid little tools to work, but it's coming.
Well, like I said, you got to call in your intern. Okay, thanks, Mike. Tony?
I'm actually going to pass. I only attended my one meeting and so because of the time, I will consolidate my report and do it all next time. So I have more than one meeting to report on.
Okay. And Karen?
I attended a Chamber of Commerce meeting at the end of the month. Just a reminder that the golf tournament is this Friday and there is still available signups for teams or for individuals. Attended a chamber chat on Friday. There was a myriad of topics that were just discussed again. Basically, it was educational efforts supported by businesses such as the self-development of offering more tours in lieu of rentals, self-imposed nighttime curfews that they have implemented themselves and more discussion on existing fleets being unadulterated and adhering to the noise restriction levels that we've been discussing for the last six months. I'd just like to say thanks to the chamber and to Ashley and to Lacey for offering that opportunity for businesses and local leaders and anyone else who's been interested in participating and just. and anyone else who's been interested in participating and, and just having, um, open-ended discussions. It's been, it's been really helpful, I think. Um, I had an airport board meeting, uh, reminder that the flight from Moab to Salt Lake City starts on May fifth. Round trip is running about a hundred and fifty bucks, so seventy-five dollars one way. Um, and Andy Salzwig, the airport director, is still in need of volunteers for, um, the safety exercise that it needs to be performed for, um, DOT and FAA. And the exercise, um, it's on Thursday, April twenty-second, from ten to twelve. Uh, the exercise could potentially go to two o'clock. Um, he needs actor types who want to be in, uh, in situations for, uh, safety, like an airplane crash and, and, um, uh, different abilities of, of folks who would, would need help. Um, it's at the airport grounds off of Blue Hills Road. Snacks, beverages, and shelter will be provided in the Southeast, um, Utah Health Department will be there, uh, screening. So, uh, that's what I have. Oh, and just a quick mention that there's a, a big yard sale happening at the, um, Grand County Middle School on April thirtieth, um, and it's all the, the inventory that desks and chairs and, um, chalkboards and potentially anything, uh, that is school-related, they're trying to sell. So before they, um, open up the new school, so that's it.
Thanks, Karen, Kalen.
So that's, I'll just segue right into another yard sale, Community Rebuild is having a restore slash yard sale on four seventeen at their campus, as well as a community planting day at the, um, Living Building Challenge Project on Mill Creek Drive, date to be determined. So that was one item from the Moab Area Housing Task Force meeting that happened. Um, um, Cinema Court has fifty, over fifty people on their waitlist for their one and two-bedroom units and thirty-plus on three bedrooms. So, um, housing crisis is not over, as we all know. Um, the county is doing an outreach event on four-twenty-one, um, from four to six P M. It's county planning and zoning and HOSU on the HDHO to provide context and history of it, of it, as well as what the deal is with deed restrictions. Um, and it's primarily aimed at real estate agents and existing, uh, professionals in development, just so that people sort of have, get a better knowledge of what the deal with this, uh, tool is. The Housing Task Force is planning other events, one per season through this year. The summer is going to be an informational block party for Royal Crossing. And then in the fall, one on USDA loans, which is a tool that, um, many homeowners, moderate-income homeowners use, and then in winter, a landlord training event. And I went to a travel council meeting. Um, they are about to roll out a two-hundred-thousand-dollar ad campaign aimed at, um, fall visitation, focusing on flying customers who need maximal ser- goods and services when they're here. And it also includes the recreate Responsible message, in addition to just trying to get people here. Uh, yesterday afternoon, I was on This Week in Moab with Gabriel Wojtek and Curtis Wells, as well as our, um, the host, uh, discussing various issues that, about, um, development in Moab and the issues we're facing. I participated in the two rounds of the Sustainability Director interviews, which was very interesting. Um, we interviewed some diverse candidates. Some people come to this job from a variety of backgrounds. Um, there was no one that was, had like a decade of experience in a mountain town doing exactly what we're asking our Sustainability Director to do, so, um, but I'm excited to have one again, and I think Mila will do a great job. I went to a Moab Dark Skies meeting, um, and that group is very aware that, um, we are working our way through sort of the five-year grace period until full implementation of the outdoor lighting ordinances. So they are planning a, um, concentrated outreach event to sort of try to get the community engaged and excitedly working towards, um, maximal compliance, um, prior to the deadline. And, um, as your duly-appointed representative on the Solidway Special Service District Board, we had our regular monthly meeting, which was mainly about, uh, the big bond that we're in the process of acquiring as a component of the Monument Waste Utah Operations Purchase, as well as some, um, improve, operational improvements, including, um, moving our employee health insurance from the county plan to some, another provider that's, uh, better, basically. Um, uh, getting the third-party payroll service so that, um, our staff spends less time on that road, road activity every month, um, new I T provider, and some, um, staff policies. And we also went on a, uh, Moab landfill tour, which was very, um, and actually been down to the construction debris part of the landfill recently, and they have dug a gigantic hole. A lot of what landfill cell is basically airspace, um, to people who are, need to get rid of stuff. And they have created a, um, inverse mountain of airspace up there. So that place isn't closing anytime soon. And if we are successful with moving towards zero waste, um, that could prolong its life even further. That's what I've got.
Thank you, um, I, uh, your updates made me think of a, a question that I want to ask, um, you, Toni. Um, don't have to answer it tonight, but I'm curious about an update on like the applications for the new senior housing. Is the new senior housing full of residents? Are they still, are there still units available?
It has been full for quite a few months.
And so they've got a waitlist as well, I'm sure.
I don't have exact numbers tonight, but yeah, they've got people on the waitlist.
Yeah. Um, it's a real challenge. Okay, thank you, Kalen. Um, thank you, everyone, for your meetings that you're attending. And, uh, we will move right along to the approval of minutes, eight-one and eight-two minutes for March twenty-third and minutes from April sixth, is there a motion? Kalen?
I move to approve the minutes from March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, and April sixth, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you for that, is there a second? Karen? Thank you, Karen, uh, any discussion? Uh, seeing none, I will call for the vote, Ronnie?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Toni?
Aye.
Kalen?
Aye.
And Mike? Motion passes five-zero, onto Old Business, nine-one, proposed ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero-eight. In ordinance amending the municipal sewer rate classification to modify institutions, including churches and government facilities, to be calculated using the winter water rate use calculation. Joel, break it down for us, give us the dirty-
I brought this to you guys a few meetings ago with three options. And at the time, we were just starting into the budget sewer lines and trying to figure out budget sewer. At the time, I was told to bring you back option two. Option two was to adjust the calculation for sewer rates for government institutions and churches, and to determine whether or not we wanted to pass that rate difference on to the collective rate, uh, users. Well, in the meantime, in the last month, as we've been preparing this, we were doing the sewer budget and going through the shortage of impact fees. And we came to the conclusion, we need to reevaluate and redo sewer rates across the board. It no longer made sense to propose a sewer rate in this small, tiny fraction of a cost area when in reality, we have to look at all of them and potentially redo all of them to make up for the impact fees that we are losing by not having overnight accommodations. We have met with WISA, and we have met with San Juan Sewer Special Service District, and we've talked to them about the fact that we no longer have overnight accommodations, we've not permitted a hotel in the city or in the county or in San Juan County since February of two thousand nineteen. And then we're no, as we're no longer collecting impact fees, how we pay for the W R F, then that cost now needs to be bore elsewhere. And so with meeting with that group, they understood the situation. They agreed that the rate study needed to be conducted across all users, and that we needed to determine what that percentage actually is going forward and what that rate increase would be to cover that cost if we're not going to have overnight accommodations, which the overnight accommodations used to order to pay for these is a fallacy in and of itself because there's no guarantee that for the twenty-year life of this bond, those overnight accommodations will keep coming and keep paying those impact fees. So even if we turn on overnight accommodations again today, five years from now, if the market leveled off and we didn't build any more hotels, we're not getting that impact fee any longer anyways, maybe right back in the situation where we don't know what we're paying for the plant. And they have to factor in also that as you build more overnight accommodations to collect those impact fees to pay for the plant, you're rushing more quickly towards a plant that's at capacity and needs expansion, and then we need to take out more bonds in order to expand the plant. So tonight, all we're asking you to do is to consider whether or not we want to calculate governmental, government institutions and churches under a winter calculation where we only calculate November, December, and January to calculate their sewer rate, taking out their summer usage towards their sewer rate. And in so doing, they would still have a, would have them at a commercial rate on their meter size and their, uh, volume rate. So they're still being, uh, their rate is still being calculated under a commercial standard, but we're not using the twelve-month continuous water usage towards that calculation of sewer rate. So basically, the question tonight is, do we want to change churches and government institutions to winter water rate calculation, leaving them in the commercial standard for meter size? And then reevaluate the rate of all users as we go forward with WISA and San Juan Special Service District in order to cover the cost of the W R F.
Thanks for, um, that, Joel. Uh, uh, just, I'm gonna make a bad joke, it stinks. Ronnie?
Um, I mean, I guess the first question this raises, knowing that we're gonna have to revisit all rates, um, just so everyone's clear and it's all on the table, like regardless of how we vote tonight, it might change again when the rate study's done, right? I mean, is there still the possibility when a new rate study is done that, that a new institutional rate will be, um, created? Just because at our March ninth meeting, when I listened back, it seemed like that was one of the questions resilience, um, about what that would be. So I just didn't know, um, if when they, or whoever does, I don't, you know, know if it's necessarily them that does the new rate study, um, if there was gonna be a chance that if we change the churches to something now, that it might change again. I just want everyone to be clear on, uh, you know, whatever we change it, you know, if we change it tonight, if that's gonna stick, or if they have to expect that something might change yet again in a few months.
That's a great question. Um, it's very possible it could change again, and we're taking steps to try and reduce that rate increase across the board. So we're also looking at impact fees across all three districts as well, and re-evaluating those impact fees going forward that we collect on houses and other uses to try and collect in those areas as well, despite the fact we're not getting overnight accommodations. But yes, we're gonna do everything we can to mitigate the raise and the increase. But at the same time, Ronnie, absolutely, if we go into a new study, everyone's rate's going to change to some degree, for sure.
Thanks for that question, Ronnie. Somebody else have their hand up?
I was just gonna make a motion.
Yes.
I move to approve proposed ordinance twenty-twenty-one oh eight, ordinance amending, uh, the municipal sewer rate classification to modify institutions, including churches and government facilities, to be calculated using the winter water rate use calculation.
Thank you, Toni, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Kalen, that's a second discussion.
So I intend to support this. It seems like this is moving us, moving the rates in the right direction in terms of fairness. Um, but I think, uh, during the rate study, um, maybe additional, uh, work could be done because I noticed that the MIC might be considered a government facilities, and yet it would seem that its use, sewer use probably fluctuates seasonally as a tourist business does. Um, and so just lumping it in with other government facilities, for which that isn't the case, may be inaccurate. But for the sake of moving this issue along, um, I'm, I'm willing to support it.
Um, Joel, I just have, uh, one other question. When we make decisions, there are implication, uh, you know, implications to the decisions we make. What's the implication to the time that it's going to take for Marcy and her team to restructure, to get the, to change the rates, to message out? Like, is this a lot of backend work?
For this change tonight?
Yes.
No, it's only about ten institutions.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mike?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Toni?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Kalen?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero, thank you staff so much for this work. We're out in section ten, new business. Council, I put together a consent agenda. It was just some easy stuff to pass unless, does, please raise your hand if you've got issue, if you want me to pull any of the items in the consent agenda out. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the-
I just have one quick question.
Yep.
The noise ordinance is not part of the consent agenda, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
I'll move to approve, oh.
Go ahead.
Okay, you could second, um, it's so confusing with the Toni, Ronnie. Um, uh, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ronnie, thank you, Toni, for the second. Uh, all those in favor, I will do a, sorry, roll call vote, Toni?
Aye.
Karen? Mike? Ronnie?
Aye.
Kalen?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. And now we're on ten-two, the proposed resolution seventeen dash twenty-twenty-one, a resolution of the Moab City Council approving an interlocal cooperative agreement among public entities regarding the community renewable energy program. Carly, thank you so much for your work on this. And council, I just want to kick us off by saying, um, that, um, I have had conversations with the mayor of Salt Lake City about this. Uh, this is an exciting thing moving forward. And what's most exciting, too, is the more cities that we get to join us, um, in this program, the cheaper it becomes for us. So I just, you know, Carly is gonna describe more, but I just want us to think, who's my best buddy in the political world that I could call and see if they might join us? So whether it's, you know, I don't know, uh, Carly, maybe you have, um, suggestions of who we might reach out to, but otherwise, take it away.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mary, that's a really good intro. This is a program that you guys are all familiar with, so I won't bore you with the details of, of why we're here. Um, but like the resolution before you, so what it was, is it would do to me, it would authorize the city to enter their local agreement with the other twenty or so communities who are signing on that the mayor just mentioned. And it also, um, commits us to become an anchor community, which means we're basically one of the communities that guarantee the financing, hire professional services that we need to complete this work. Um, there are eight, in, other communities that are interested in being an anchor. Um, six of them are basically for sure, it's my understanding, Salt Lake City, Park City, Summit County, us, Town of Castle Valley, and Grand County, so our, our immediate neighbors, who I believe have already made these commitments, so they're ahead of us a little. Um, and then the two who are on the fence are Salt Lake County and Mill Creek. So, um, we are being asked in this resolution to pay a maximum of, a total of twelve thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty cents over the next two years. But if we get those other two local communities, Salt Lake County and Mill Creek, our, our, um, fee would be only around ten thousand. So, um, that is just the action item in front of you here. Any questions?
Yeah, Carly, so thank you so much for all your work on this, this is great. Uh, what, any expectation that a whole flood of communities? I mean, you know, the renewable energy thing is gaining steam as time goes on. Is it likely that we'll see forty communities or fifty or more?
Oh, that's such a good question. So for this, for HB four eleven, which was passed in twenty eighteen, I believe, um, a community had to pass a resolution committing to, to, uh, move forward with the effort. So the twenty-three that did before, um, I believe, twenty nineteen, the end of twenty nineteen, those are the ones who are locked and able to participate. locked and able to participate. And the question has been, how many of those, the twenty-three to twenty-seven um will continue with the IOA? So for this effort, it's it's now capped it at those who uh passed resolutions a couple of years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? And Mike, I don't know if you um caught your little little uh pun there. Renewable is 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 gaining steam?
I'm sorry.
Um other questions? If not, I will call for the vote. Uh Mike?
Hi.
Tawny?
Was there a motion?
Oh.
I was gonna say, I think we missed the motion.
Think we need a motion.
Um I will ask, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution establishing the city of Moab's participation as an anchor community in the community renewable energy program and authorizing the interlocal agreement between participating public entities.
Thanks, Kalen. Second, thank you, Tawny. What would I do without you? Be all out of order, all out of order. Um any further discussion?
I don't think I can rein you in on that point.
Um and it's only eight thirty-seven. Usually I get silly much later in the night. Uh okay, calling for the vote. Mike?
Hi.
Tawny?
Hi.
Kalen?
Hi.
Karen?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes five zero. Um and ten three, proposed ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero seven, noise control. This is a draft. This is uh uh we're gonna have discussion on this item and we need to provide direction to Lori. I want to just say huge, huge gratitude to Lori for um for eating the elephant. And also for outreach to the community that you've done in explaining what this says. And based on Kent Green's comment tonight, I feel like we might need to spend a little time going through this ordinance so that we know exactly what it does and does not say. How do you feel about that? I did, we didn't really talk about this before. We thought, oh, you know, we'll we'll just, you know, maybe hit some points, but I think maybe we we go through it tonight because I think people are gonna watch it. So um that mayor may not have read the noise ordinance. So do you mind taking us through it?
I don't at all. Great. Yeah. We're definitely on the same page. So uh my plan for this evening was to just start with a little introduction and then to share the ordinance on my screen and explain some of the relevant provisions. There are some areas that are complicated and that uh will be easier to explain with words. I tried to do the best I could in the staff report. So that's the plan. And then what I'd like to do is maybe break up some of the questions by section if that feels appropriate, or if we're okay with some of the sections, we can hold questions until the end. Uh Summer, do you want to add Les Blumberg from the waiting room into the agenda at this point?
Yep, he's on his way.
Okay, so I just wanted to explain that we have, uh the city has a noise expert, Les Blumberg, who has uh really helped uh the city with this initial draft. And also our police chief Brett Edge is here. And the we are gonna feel the questions that come up as we go through the ordinance, so feel free to address them to whoever you think is appropriate when we get to that point. So just as an introduction, why are we here? So council's aware, the city of Moab is facing a excessive noise problem in our community and in particular regarding vehicular noise. The council's heard from citizens that their sleep is being affected. They can't open their windows at night. And in general, their personal health is being affected as well as their enjoyment of their property. The council's also heard that noise is keeping people from visiting Moab. So it's affecting our economy. The city has also heard, and we've heard it this evening, that the state legislature locals uh local businesses and citizens want us to have a strong noise ordinance, and they want us to enforce it. And Mayor, I'm gonna make this pun for you. That's something we've heard loud and clear. Uh so this, the point of this is, we are here tonight to talk about a noise ordinance. And I want to talk to a little bit about Mr. Kent Green's uh comments. He had some concerns, but I I think those are concerns about the county's ordinance. We we are only here tonight to talk about a noise ordinance, noise regulations. This ordinance draft that's before you tonight has nothing to do with a fleet cap and has nothing to do with uh business licensing. Uh I think that the the point the council has has gotten is that we first need to work on our uh cleaning up our noise ordinance and then focusing on enforcing it. And we'll see how that works. And you know, I I said this to the Motorized Trails Committee. If there are future actions, there are future actions, but this is what we're undertaking right now, and it's only a noise ordinance. Uh the goal of this ordinance is to make clear the city's regulations uh on noise emission and provides a means to enforce those regulations. So the draft that's before you has been drafted to repeal and replace the city's existing noise regulations. Uh we're fortunate enough to have Les Blumberg come to one of our prior meetings and he explained that he looked at our current noise regulations and felt like in their entirety, they could benefit from some updating to more modern community standards and some clarification. So this is not a revision of the current noise ordinance, it's a repeal and replace. The thing to remember about that is that the council can adopt provisions of this ordinance or you can adopt it in its entirety. It's it's completely up to you. If there are parts of this you like and there are parts of it you don't like, you can eliminate them. You can I've gone through our old noise ordinance and made sure it included the relevant provisions I thought were important for our community. Uh so right now, it's intended to repeal and replace the no old noise ordinance. In this draft, you'll notice that some of the uh provisions or sections are in brackets. That's where I felt like staff felt like we needed particular input from the council. That doesn't mean you can't edit or change any other part of the ordinance. Those are just some areas where Les and I felt like we wanted particular direction from the council. So as we go over this ordinance, we can focus on those. If council's comfortable with the recommendations that we've put in brackets, we don't need to discuss them. If there are particular questions you have about some of the recommendations, because I think you are gonna have some, and I'm actually gonna change one of the recommendations that I I made in the draft, we can talk about those. But what I want to, I want to emphasize at the beginning is that the ordinance, this ordinance is based upon a lot of input. Um this is based upon previous input from the city council. It's based upon input from the OHV and ATV community, and I really appreciate the listening sessions. Uh I attended them. I've heard what the community has to say, the ones offered by the chamber and the one most recently by the county. And I want the community to know that we've listened to those concerns and we've gotten, uh we've made changes to the ordinance based upon those concerns. This ordinance is also based upon the Environmental Protection Agency's Model Community Noise Ordinance. And uh the city's prior noise control ordinance, the noise ordinance from the city of Ogden as a comparable community, and also, we also heard very loud and clear that we want to be on the same page with the county. So this is consistent with many of the things that the county is doing on key things. Uh we've also relied upon the consultation of Les Blumberg, who's our noise control expert um who is in the meeting this evening. And then there's also constraints placed on us by state and federal law. So there are some things we actually can't do uh based upon state and federal law. The provisions of this ordinance are also uh the result of a lot of collaboration with the OHV and ATV community. And we'd like to thank the ATV owners in town for meeting with our city manager and providing their time to provide input to the city. Uh I'd like to thank the Motorized Trails Commission for inviting me to their most recent meeting to provide input on this draft as well as Cliff Coons with riders with respect. Uh I
Sorry, Lori, can you just tell us who's on that trails committee? Because I was unclear if um Mr. Green was also on that committee. Regardless, could you just, do you have a a list of who serves on that committee?
Uh I I do. I so Cliff Coons is the chair. Uh Reed Bakken is the e-bike rep. John Clevenger from BLM, Dave Cousins, Doc Hadler from the Grand County Commission, uh Dave Hellman, uh Doug McCanney, uh V, Vicent, Rod Murdock, Christina Sloan was at one of their meetings as well, Jeff Stevens, Jason Taylor, Zane Taylor, Kathy Tusonowski. I'm so sorry if I mispronounced her name.
Thank you. I think that list is actually quite helpful for us to know whose impact has been or whose uh input has been put into the
And you know, I I want to let you know that we we got input from the Motorized Trail Committee and uh did take their recommendations. And uh I do have, or as I go through the ordinance, I understood everything Cliff Coons said in public comment, and so I will explain why our ordinance is where it is and what his comments mean in particular with regard to some of the provisions.
Oh, good, cuz I mean, some of this really does feel like another language. Um so I'm
That's why I wanted to have enough time to kind of explain some of these uh and and the decision is really, really yours, because I'm gonna go through the ordinance and explain some of the positives and negatives, just like I did back in October. You know, and and it, my position on this is to provide the council with options. And the council can decide which options they'd like to include in the ordinance, but I will explain what they mean and 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 again, some of the disadvantages that have been pointed out with some of the the tools that are in this ordinance. One of the things I really want to emphasize is that the local businesses want to try and help solve this problem. The local businesses understand that excessive noise is an issue in this community and they're willing to help. And uh I'm gonna talk about when we get to some of the actual provisions of the ordinance, uh how I think we can best serve our community without uh causing a detriment to our local businesses. And I think there's a way to do that. So the plan is to gather feedback from the council this evening and come back with a further revised draft at the next council meeting on April twenty seventh. That we may not get all the input, so I do say if we get to the end and there are comments or suggestions, please feel free to provide them to me in the interim. Uh I think if we can get through the main provisions of this ordinance and answer a lot of your questions, I would consider that a huge success that we get to that point before ten PM. So the authority
Did you just say ten PM?
Yeah, that was, see, it's somebody you're listening, yes. You're the mayor, but whenever, whenever we are running, you you can just let me know. I am hoping that it is not that late, though.
Well, let's just put it, let's put a stamp on it because it's day forty-eight right now, and I think, you know, let's probably just like we're we should, we should definitely not go past nine thirty.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
So one of the things I want to point out and the and it's important to point out that the city council has the authority to pass this ordinance. Do you have statutory statutory authority under Utah State Code to regulate noise? You also have your inherent police power to regulate public health and safety issues. I think it's been very clear to the council and everyone else in this community that noise has become a public health and safety issue in our community. Uh so the purpose of the overall purpose of the ordinance is to prevent noise pollution, excessive noise, which may jeopardize the health, comfort, convenience, welfare, peace or safety of the citizens of Moab and or degrade their quality of life. So I'm at this point, if everyone is okay with this, what I'd like to do is call up the ordinance. I don't think unless there's any any need to discuss any of the definitions, I don't think there's any need to discuss any of the definitions. Okay, sounds good. I want to be efficient about this because I want to talk about the stuff that's really important. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my screen and I'm gonna talk about the specific provisions, starting with All right, starting with the prohibited acts here. So I you should be able to see section eight point two four zero four.
Lori, can we just ask, does anybody have any issue with the whereas's? No?
Uh I I was struck that they were included in the city code. That seems, it seems like they're more part of a resolution but aren't part of the code. So I was just appreciate some uh justification.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly take that out and put it in a resolution. As I'm thinking off the top of my head, I think we perhaps included some whereas's when you passed the um Assured Workforce Housing Ordinance. And in in part to sort of establish the the uh the rationale behind it and your authority to pass the ordinance. But if you if you'd rather have that just be in the resolution, we can certainly do that.
I think so. Um I think that's more consistent with code and we don't want to bug our code with a whole bunch of stuff. And so I I actually um I agree that um uh the whereas's look good, but let's put them in a resolution and then let's keep code clean.
They need to be, they need to just be in the ordinance, not in the code.
Yeah.
Not a resolution.
Oh, in the ordinance. Yes, 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 yes. Sorry.
Wait, that's just the opposite. So Joel, you said they need to be in the ordinance, not the resolution. I thought it was the opposite.
Well, no, this isn't ordinance, it's passing this code. They need to be in the ordinance, not in the section of the ordinance that's establishing the code. Whereas's are in the ordinance. Then you have the second thereafter that establishes the code. The whereas's are in the ordinance, not in the code.
Gotcha, okay. All right. So with that, if everyone's okay, we can move on to the specific prohibitions. And just as an introduction to this section, these are common prohibitions that are included in many communities and I are 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 based upon our prior noise ordinance and based upon uh the recommendations of our noise consultant, Les Blumberg. Just so you know, we've tailored these for our community. None of this is set in stone. So if there are some specific prohibitions that we feel like are not necessary in our community or we want to change any of them, we can certainly do so. What I wanted to point out on, if you look at this specific prohibition here for for example, just the first one, radios, television sets, musical instruments and similar devices, you'll notice that I I I do have some information in brackets here. It says between the hours of eight PM and eight AM. And I want to tell you why I picked eight eight PM to eight AM. That was purely based upon uh a need for some types of nighttime restrictions. And when the city was initially looking and we were initially looking at some legislation to put some uh nighttime hours on our noise from vehicular noise, that was SB one sixty-eight, the initial proposed hours for that bill were eight PM to eight AM. So I use that as a starting point. What I think would be more appropriate is perhaps to make those from potentially ten PM to seven AM, which is more consistent, I think, um with other communities. And especially, I provided you with the noise ordinance from the city of Ogden where their restricted nighttime hours are in fact, ten PM to seven AM for many of their general restrictions not relating to vehicles. The restricted hours that the county is putting in their ordinance are um their hours or nighttime hours are nine PM to seven AM, Monday through Saturday, nine PM to nine AM on Sunday, and in the summer, which they've defined as May through September, ten AM to six PM. So what I'm gonna say at this point is, this is, these are recommendations put in brackets. That is something I think that needs some input and guidance from the council on what type of quote unquote nighttime hours you want when you're looking at this noise ordinance. And uh like I said, I just put eight PM to eight AM in as a placeholder. Uh I do think that it potentially should be closer to ten PM to seven AM, but there's, this is what's the needed for council to debate.
Okay, so when we hit these brackets, we need an efficient way to be able to get feedback from the council and move through it. So when we hit a bracket moment and you want feedback from the council and we're not voting on anything tonight, but you do need feedback, are you comfortable with a straw poll of like a suggestion? Like, do we feel comfortable with what it says or does anyone want to make a suggestion?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so if we're gonna straw poll it, then you probably, when you get to a bracket, explain it and then unshare screen so that we can do that.
And so Mayor and Lori, if I may suggest that if you're serious about wanting to get done by nine thirty, you're gonna, I would suggest that we, much of this stuff is taken out of the existing noise ordinance and it's not really controversial so much as far as, as far as I understand it. And instead, focus our efforts right now on the motor vehicle stuff and we can come back to this.
Okay. Um well, uh but but um Lori needs the feedback for these bracketed items is what she's saying. We have to at some point do this.
Right. And for efficiency standpoint, what what I can say is there's a lot of brackets, but the main, what your main decision on on there's a lot of brackets, but the main, what your main decision on, on is what are you going to define as your nighttime hours? And that'll knock out a lot of decision.
Let me ask this. What, what's our, what's, what are our hours for our parks? Because we set a standard parks curfew hours and I don't think they change. Joel, do you remember doing that?
It was before I got here that we set the park curfew hours. I think they're 10 to 6.
I can, I can look it up.
Yeah. Laurie, if you could look it up. If we match our parks, because we also have a musical instrument park. So we.
Yeah, I also think that 8:00 is problematic for musical instruments because we have a high school and the high school football game is the bad place. That will easily go past 8:00 PM.
But it wouldn't go past 10. So let's look at what the parks are. And I guess that's what my recommendation would be is to match what our park hours.
I think Caitlin has his hand up. I know that the.
That's the only bracket that, is the time and the number of feet away. I'm comfortable with either matching what our nighttime hours are for the park or with what Laurie recommended and going 10 to 7. And that takes out a whole lot of bracketed info.
Yeah.
And Mayor, because of the shared screen, you may not, can you see all the council members?
I can't.
Okay, so some are raising their hands in that.
Oh, okay. Ronnie, while, while Laurie's looking it up, let's talk. Ronnie?
Well, I'm just looking at our current noise stuff. And I know, you know, residents feel like they've given up a lot. So currently we have 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, Monday through Saturday, and then not before 9:00 AM on Sunday. So I kind of feel like if they currently have slightly quieter Sunday mornings, I don't know why they should give that up. That's.
So 10 to 7, except for Sunday on 9. And does that match our parks?
For the parks, uh, general park policy, all parks and park areas are open at 5:00 AM and close at 11:00 PM.
But the noise ordinance would still be enforced during those times.
Correct.
That's an open and closed rule.
Right.
So I'd like to second Mike's suggestion that we focus on motor vehicles. I feel like if we start there and think about, I don't feel like the times of day for these other issues.
It's done. I think we're almost done here. Feel good about 10 to 7, except for till 9?
I don't feel good about that for the motor vehicles because like isolated musical instrument is not the same as the onslaught that we're getting from motor vehicles. And so I feel like the times could be different and I'm not comfortable using the park, current park standards to cover what all, all noises when.
Okay.
Not being overwhelmed with complaints about park noise.
I got it. Les?
Yeah, I was just gonna note that in, in noise ordinance in general in communities, there can be very different arrangements of hours, partly because in some cases, what you're doing is exempting a noise during certain hours.
Yeah.
And like, like construction, you might be exempting for a certain timeframe. You probably don't want to accept construction till 10:00 PM. And so you will have and find that communities have different hours. You don't just set day and night, but you can have many different ones for different occasions and, and, and things that you're treating.
Got it.
And I have some specific information I want to share when we do get to the vehicular noise section about the nighttime hours. So I, Caitlin, I, I understand your point and I want to, when we get to the talk, discussion about vehicular noise, the, the nighttime hours restriction is going to, I think it'd be important discussion.
Okay, but this is not vehicular. This is just not, this is just the other.
Correct.
So does anybody have an issue with the suggestion of 10 to 7, except Sunday 10 to 9? For this section? Okay, then I think we're good moving forward with that, except for Karen.
Well, I'm.
Player boombox on Sunday morning.
No, I'm, I apologize, but I'm just curious if, um, with, there was an exception and I, and I'm, I've kind of lost it. I don't know if it was Logan's exception or, or our exception. But the high, the high school, in the summertime, they actually, the marching band is out there by 6:00, 6:30 practicing. So is that an, an exception that we're gonna, is schools an exception? I don't think it was written in our draft that way.
Can we do an exception for school, Laurie?
Yes.
Okay, let's do it. Does anybody have a disagreement about exempting the school? Great. So 10 to 7, except for Sunday 9 and exempting school, musical instrument.
Wait, Mayor, can you slow down there? Sunday, I just want to make sure I've got the hours right on Sunday. 10 to 7, uh, Sunday, what are the hours?
Um, 9:00 AM on Sunday. So 10, 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, except on Sunday, it's 9:00 PM, 9:00 AM.
Okay.
And accepting, exempting musical instruments at the school or the school.
We'll just exempt the high school.
The high school. Yeah, I guess. Also Karen wants to exempt turbine box.
Well, no, I was just wondering if we wanted, I mean, I appreciate the, the attempts of the updates, but a phonograph player, I mean, I, it feels a little 1970s. I'm just wondering if we should maybe say, you know, Bluetooth speaker or, I, I mean, there's some wording in there that, that is, that it's dating us. And if we're updating, maybe we should update or read.
I think suggestions like that, you can just email me those. Those aren't policies. Yeah, if you, and, and I know Mike has some suggestions like that. If you have stylistic changes.
Yeah. Why don't we all just email our suggestions into Laurie and let's get on with the kids?
Okay.
Has one more question, super quick. Are we like construction? I know a bunch of construction crews that in the summertime are starting wicked early because it's hotter than Haiti. So are we, is that included in this section here?
Yeah, hold on. Well, well, hold on just one second. Well, I'm going to go back to sharing my screen and we'll get to the construction section because that is one of the things that I definitely need feedback on. Is we, I, I, we've got some, because it's important to have some restrictions on construction because you're going to have neighbors who are, want restrictions. But we want to make sure that we have the correct hours. And again, Les pointed out, we can put different hours restrictions in different parts of the ordinance. So let's share this and let me get down. Okay, so hold on a second. You're gonna.
No worries.
Okay, so it's at the bottom of page 11. And these are again in brackets. So if there needs to be debate and discussion on the construction hours, these are merely suggestions.
Well, just to clarify what this is, the, the construction and other activities are covered by your decibel limits. And what this is an exemption from is an exemption from those decibel limits during the daytime hours.
Um, when I was in the construction world, we never started before 7:00 AM. And we also finished by 6:00 AM, or sorry, 6:00 PM. Because the worst thing in the world is to be sitting out in your backyard having dinner and construction going on next door. And I know it's a pain in the butt and I know you want to start earlier because it's hot. But at the same time, it's a quality of life issue. And so for me, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM seems high. I would do 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Mayor, our own public works guys are out working before 7:00 AM. They're out on the road. They're working. And so are other road crews and construction. I mean, they're, they're out there getting set up.
Yeah. Except from the decibel. So you can set up without making noise. You can be on a job site, but not making noise, right?
Yep.
You just.
I've never seen one, but.
I just know roofers like to get out when it's, you know, almost still dark out. I mean, when the sun is coming up because it, in the summertime here, it is, I mean, as we know, it's exceptionally hot. So.
Yeah.
I, I think 6 is more reasonable, especially summers that we have.
Can you? Can we do a, and well, I was gonna say, can we do a seasonal exception or is that?
Yes.
Be complicated? No, you can do. Yeah, I, I mean, and just for construction, of course, we can just add that in. So we could do, you know, if in the summer hours, defined summer hours, I don't know what you want to say.
June 15th to August 15th.
Okay.
I was just gonna go on the record as disagreeing. I mean, I think there's a lot of construction related stuff you can do from 6 to 7:00 AM that doesn't exceed the decibel limit.
And that's permitted. Because if, if they don't exceed the decibel limit, they can, they can work. This is an exception to the decibel limits. So if they can.
So I don't want someone using a chainsaw at 6:00 AM.
Yeah.
Right. Um, well, i- i- if you, if you, if you exempt it, they, for construction. Now that, that construction, you can also make construction different than, you know, a chainsaw is not.
Jackhammer.
Okay.
Or even a roofing, a roof, a nail gun, roofing gun.
I mean, there are all kinds of people in this community working all kinds of different hours and jobs. And I just don't think you have to be using power tools before 7. I mean, there are all kinds of people who landscape starting at 5:00 in the morning, but don't necessarily have to use the power stuff before 7.
I'm confused about. I'm confused about the overlap between 9 and 10 and how the operation of a mechanically powered saw is different from a construction activity. And how that's enforced with the different times. I'm wondering if the time should be the same or these two categories should be co, uh, made into one.
I agree.
So, um, yeah, what, what you're, what you're noticing is that there's a couple of different categories of, of equipment, like lawn equipment, more like maintenance. And we, we certainly can clarify that and change those around a little bit. You, you, I think you don't want to include maintenance with construction with the same hours because it seems to me like there's no, you, you don't want people mowing at 6:00 AM or 10:00 PM. And, and so, you know, you, I think you can, can shorten the, the maintenance hours.
Well, we have the same heat issue here for landscaping that we do for construction. So to me, it seems like they should be the same. Like if you've ever done hardcore landscaping work in this town, you want to be out there early. And it's not to say you don't, you could wait to use your power tool still 7:00 AM too. But I don't have a problem with them being the same.
So that's good. So what, what we're, what we're aiming for is, is some consistency then between paragraphs nine and 10? Okay.
Potentially. I mean, as it is, you could break out a track hoe at 7:00 AM. But before you use your sander, you have to wait till eight. So it kind of.
No, I understand. So consistency between the two, I, it was, is good. Is there a consensus as to what that consistency looks like?
I like 7 to 6.
So do I.
And Karen, remember I, I, you know, I, I watched people roof all summer long.
And this is to draft. So these are, I, I do, I really want to be cognizant of the fact that the vehicular noise is what we really want to talk about. And so I, we can come back with that recommendation, 7 to 6. And then we can debate that more at that point. Would that be okay?
Yep.
Okay, so.
So you'll make that change, but then if somebody's feeling really passionate about it when we bring it back for final deliberation, then somebody could bring up at that point.
Of course. And that, and in the meantime, we can get input. And if we get comments from folks in the community that those are good hours or not so good hour, not great hours, we can modify them.
Okay, let's keep going then.
Okay, so I'm going to keep sharing my screen. I think we're, we're through. If everyone is okay, if we can just get through the specific provisions and talk a minute about maximum permissible sound levels by receiving land use, if we're okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, so, sorry, I'm going to make you all dizzy. So maximum, uh, sound levels by receiving land use. So this is where you have a piece of property and sound is coming on. This is different than the other sections where there's something emitting sound. So this is receiving sound. These are some proposed, um, levels here. As I pointed out, these are very consistent or actually almost ve- very consistent with the city of Ogden. And they are also consistent with, I'm going to show you, I'm going to share as my, update my screen share here and show you a chart that Les provided of other communities that have decibel limits for residential district boundaries. And, and so this is a little hard to see. But if you can see on the left-hand side, you've got the number of cities. On the bottom of your graph here, you've got the decibel limits. And if you can read across the bottom, you can see that the majority of the communities are falling in the range that we recommend. And if you look at the, uh, the dot, uh, all the way at the top of the chart, the round dot that indicates there's between, you know, just above 35 communities, little lower than 40 that have a daytime level around 55.
All right, quick question for you. This particular section, because it has to do with noise sources that are on private property, would not apply then, if I read this correctly, to off-road vehicles on public roadways. That comes later. Is that correct?
Yes. And, and so just keep in mind that this is a receiving land use. So if it's the, uh, it's the vehicle admissions that we are addressing, the, the sound that's admitted from the vehicles in the vehicle section, if that makes sense. So this is a code, if right now you can think of it in terms of code enforcement. Your neighbor's air conditioner is too loud. There's some other noise disturbance coming on to your property.
Yeah, all that's fine, but I just want to clarify that it doesn't apply to the original instigation for revision of this ordinance, which is off-road vehicles.
Right, that's addressed in the later section.
Correct. Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to update my screen share back to the ordinance and so in this section, uh, do we have questions on some of the decibel limits? Obviously the decibel limits are in brackets. I just tried to share some data that shows we're in the ballpark of other communities. And then we've got hours that need to be decided upon. And, you know, we can, we can do the same thing that we're suggesting for the specific prohibitions. Where you, you have your hours restrictions, your nighttime hours are 10 to 7, which is as they are, as written right here. Oh, and we can do Sunday starting at 9:00 AM, but that is entirely up to you.
Counsel, does anybody have a problem with this? And just speak up because I can't see your hands.
I just have a question, Laurie. So, um, I guess we can just email you if we have questions. But back in the first example that you gave, which was the section, I think, on radios and television sets, it refers to a distance. So this section you're showing us now talks about the property boundary. So maybe I need to look at that one.
Correct. And, and there, there, Les, do you want to explain why there are some distances in some of the prohibitions as opposed to not putting distances in other places?
Sure. There's a, a, a couple of different regulatory tools that are being used here. Property or, or decibel limits are almost always enforced at the property line or any paid place beyond the property line. Often the property line is not a good place to measure because it could be a fence right there. So sometimes you measure beyond it. The, the radios, photographs and the other, the other things are dated. Those are almost most, most, most often regulated using what's called the plainly audible standard, whether you can hear them at a certain distance. You have to specify that distance and that distance is usually from the source. Although if it's emanating from private property, it can often be from the, the property line. So you could choose either of those locations. But when you choose either a decibel limit or a plainly audible standard, you do have to specify a location. because noise decreases with distance. And so, you know, if, if, you know, if you set a limit at fifty-five, well, yeah, it depends where you measure it. And so you got to specify both. So it's usually the property line for decibel limits. And for the plainly audible, it's usually a distance from the source. The most common distance chosen in this country is fifty feet for, uh, the day. A hundred as in yours, um, and two hundred are not, um, out of the, um, you know, are not unreasonable either. Um, so it's right in the, you, you're, you're kind of at the longer distance, but it's, it's not in the unreasonable range.
Okay, um, my only request was our, our current ordinance has fifty feet instead of a hundred. So to double it, just seems like a, a net loss um, for a resident for me. So I'd prefer if it was back at fifty.
Okay, and you know, in the interest of time, what I can do is put that back in. And then we can debate that at the later meeting, because I do, I do want to, it, it's, uh, nine seventeen, and I want to make sure we, so.
Yeah, well, I just want to say, originally, we said we were gonna go from this meeting to a second draft at the next meeting, but it honestly seems like nine thirty is not going to be enough time. So are we gonna have an additional meeting? It just seems like we put this time pressure on ourselves, and then we don't get as good of a product. So I'd rather a lot some more time, either tonight or at another meeting, but.
Well, let's keep going. You know, we're making progress. Let's check in in fifteen minutes, and then we'll decide.
All right, sounds great. I will go back to the ordinance, and then I'm gonna go to the vehicular noise section, because I think that's what we really, uh, would like to focus some time on. So I want to just talk briefly, the sections here on, uh, requirements for mufflers, those are state requirements, that state law that's consistent with what we had. And actually, the only thing we really had in our prior noise ordinance referencing, uh, motor vehicles. But I want to point out, section, uh, paragraphs here, four and five, these relate to motorcycles. And this is, uh, what is the Environmental Protection Agency essentially says that motorcycles manufactured in certain time periods must meet a certain decibel sound level. No, no greater than a certain decibel sound level at the time of manufacture. Okay, so there are only a few federal laws that regulate noise for vehicles. One of them is this, this is the EPA requirement for motorcycles. This is what we're referring to as the EPA sticker. So when these vehicles are manufactured, they end up getting a sticker that says that, that at the time of manufacture, they're compliant with the EPA. And, uh, it's a, it's a test that's easier to perform at the time of manufacture. It's not a practical test to perform in the field. One of Les's recommendations is we include this as one of our tools for noise enforcement in the community, because it's, it is one of the few federal standards, and it's a pretty, one of the advantages to having this tool in your toolbox as far as noise enforcement options for vehicles is that it's relatively easy to enforce. And I'm gonna say relatively easy, because it's just that a, a code compliance officer or a police officer would need to make sure the motorcycle has a sticker affixed to its muffler. That just shows it's EPA compliant. My understanding is that, uh, if you have, uh, need to replace your muffler, aftermarket mufflers are required to also have a sticker. So this is a tool. It is not a, uh, it's not a perfect tool, as, uh, Cliff Coons pointed out. It doesn't necessarily guarantee that, that a muff, that the, the muffler is gonna be quiet, because let's say you had a muffler manufactured back in. So this is, uh, nineteen eighty-five. Let's say you had a, a, one manufactured nineteen eighty-six. It may have deteriorated over time. It's not a perfect tool, but it's, it's a good tool. And Les has recommended that we include this in the ordinance. I think it is a good tool for you to have in your ordinance. Uh, it i- it is relatively easy to enforce, but necessary, may not necessarily agree complete quiet, it, because it does also just apply to motorcycles. So I wanted to point that out. It is a tool. If you don't want this tool, you don't have to have it.
Does any council member have an issue with this tool? I think it's a good tool. It's a good recommendation.
Yeah, and it's not other, many other cities have it. Denver uses it.
Has a no issue of it?
Okay.
I'm all for it, Lori. Uh, uh, I may interject, Lori, it seems to me you could combine paragraphs four and five by, uh, including the phrase "and" and "off-road motorcycle" in four, for example, and save yourself some words. I don't know if you're interested in doing that. Same kind of thing applies later on.
Okay, and, and Mike, I'll write those down, and if I, uh, you and I can chat, I'll send you a draft, the revised draft, and we can make sure I capture those.
Okey dokey.
So this is, this is where we get into the tools in your toolbox. So one of them is the EPA sticker. So great tool to have, not a perfect tool. We're now gonna move on to, uh, decibels. So if you look at maximum sound levels in paragraph B, I'm gonna explain, uh, some of these uh, tools. And I actually would like to start with, uh, I'm gonna actually start with, I'm gonna start with paragraphs five through eight. And I want to explain this. So what this is, is, uh, five through eight talk about a stationary test. And you're gonna hear lots of different ways to refer to this, but essentially it is a stationary test where a device is placed twenty inches from the tailpipe of the vehicle and at a forty-five degree angle, and you turn the vehicle to half throttle, and you measure the noise emitted from the vehicle. That's the test. It's a stationary test. It's also called for, um, the Society of Automotive Engineers, SAE test. There are different SAE tests. The one that's generally accepted for ATVs and motorcycles is the J twelve eighty-seven test. Okay, that's probably more information than you need, but it's a stationary test. And what I'm gonna tell you about the ninety-two decibels here, and this is one of the most important things about this meeting, is that at ninety-two decibels, which is the recommended number here, where you can see paragraphs five and six, during the hours of eight AM to eight PM, and you can decide if those are the appropriate hours, but during daytime hours, ninety-two decibels. And the reason that's important is that the local companies tell me that their, uh, equipment will meet this ninety-two decibel standard during the daytime, and they are completely willing to comply with the daytime hour restriction and not have their vehicles on the road, what at, during the nighttime hours, because they're already doing that. They're already doing a voluntary curfew. So the other issue too is that all the local, the, uh, major local companies say that their vehicles will meet this ninety-two decibel, and that it's actually a lot of the aftermarket vehicles coming to town from out of town that are higher decibel limits than this, and that those are the ones that are actually really creating the issue with the excessive noise that residents are hearing. So at ninety-two decibels during daytime hours, whatever you decide those to be, you're not gonna put the local companies out of business. And I think that's what we're trying to accomplish here, is we're trying to get some noise restrictions without putting our local businesses out of business.
What if you didn't have a noise between the hours of at all?
Uh, then you would have, actually, if you didn't have a decibel limit at all during the day.
No, no, a ninety-two always.
Well.
No, you want it quieter at night.
Because you want it quieter at night. So look at paragraphs seven and eight. The decibel limit, the key difference is those decibel limits drop to eighty-five. And what that means is your nighttime hours are gonna be quieter, which is when the issue of residents being upset, they're talking about their ability to sleep at night, open their windows at night. And so what you do is you drop that decibel limit from a state, on the stationary test to eighty-five. What you're doing is you're eliminating the, the, um, ATV noise and any souped-up vehicle noise. Let's say you've got a I don't know, Camaro or something, a, a hot rod that's super loud. You got a truck that's super loud. So you've got a nighttime hour quieter hours for all vehicles that exceed eighty-five decibels, which will meet your state law, because it applies to all vehicles. It doesn't just apply to ATVs. So what you end up is, is that you have quieter nighttime hours, and that's the key to this section.
So, um, the eight PM, businesses do a sunset tour.
Yes.
Rentals will rent out, so.
So I want to talk about that. Remember when I said at the beginning, I wanted to talk about the hours. So this eight AM to eight PM was just based upon the, the hours that were put out when we were looking at potential legislation, SB one sixty-eight. In getting input from the tour companies, uh, I've gotten some great input that most so most tour companies, if they have a sunset tour, uh, the earliest they're looking at is, uh, let's see, so they're saying six, six thirty AM, seven AM is reasonable. And that for some, some, I'm sorry, sunrise tours, and then your sunset tours, they're saying they're back, uh, generally, let's see, Kent Green says his tours are home by ten thirty or eleven, and his earliest is six thirty AM. Um, Outlaw Jeep is earliest is at seven AM. Mob Tours, their earliest is at nine AM to six PM. Epic Four by Four, eight AM to ten PM. And, uh, I think there was another one, Mob Side by Side. And I think they were seven to, um, potentially, they're, they're back a little bit earlier, six PM. So.
What about seven to ten PM?
My recommendation is that you don't use eight AM to eight PM, because you're gonna eliminate sunrise and sunset tours, and you don't want to put those businesses out of business. So my recommendation is you look at, you know, six, seven AM to ten, ten thirty, eleven, something like that.
So let's start with seven to ten. Let's go to, um, let's, I need to see everybody. Let's unshare the screen.
If you put the people on the right side of the screen, then you can adjust the, how much real estate you give to the screen share and how much to the.
If you, uh, disagree with the seven to ten. What's your, what, what you do instead?
Say that, say it again, Lori. I need to hear it one more time.
Well, what I'm asking for is a, is a kind of polling of the, the council that from seven AM to ten PM, we would have the decibel at ninety-two, which is what our vendors are asking.
And give me something to compare ninety-two decibels to. That means nothing to me.
Yeah, let me try to answer that, Tony, if I would. Caitlin and I and other people attended a big demo that Cliff gave with a bunch of people who ran their UTVs. Ninety-two is a guess. That's what Cliff thinks. And I will tell you that he had several vehicles that already exceeded ninety-two. But rental shop owners replace their stock frequently. The newer vehicles do better. Uh, so they may do all right. I'm not convinced that they won't pass without some violations. He claims that out-of-towners are the main culprit. Uh, I don't disagree with that statement. The main thing about ninety-two is, uh, I'm willing to go with that. I'm glad Lori did this. I'm willing to go with it for now. But I will tell you this, it's not clear to me that ninety-two will make a significant reduction in noise from vehicles, if vehicles are driving at the same speeds afterwards that they have historically been driving. If they slow down, sure, they're gonna be quieter. This, uh, this kind of consideration is what precipitated my question to the lobbyist guys earlier this evening about what happens if in order to make a significant difference in noise, we force owners to get quieter mufflers. Okay, so I'm willing to go with ninety-two, but it's not clear to me that's.
What does ninety-two decibel sound like?
Yeah, what, what would a regular passenger vehicle be?
A lot louder than a regular passenger vehicle, all right?
Can we, can we, that Les just pipe in, because I think Les probably knows the answer to that.
Thank you.
So, um, fir- first of all, this ninety-two decibel limit is tested at twenty inches from your, from your exhaust pipe. So it is not really representative of what you are hearing in the community. Um, the other thing that this twenty-meter stationary test does is it only tests.
Les, can I just, can I just interrupt you? Tony just wants to know.
I need something comparable.
Okay, so, so, um, a, a car would, would easily meet this. It would probably, um, at that distance be seventy-something in the seventies. A pickup truck, maybe eighty. Um, so the, these are significantly louder. I mean, the, the limit of, of ninety-two decibels is basically the limit of a semi tractor trailer truck. So you, you're setting it at a limit that a semi could probably pass.
And I think the one thing that, the important thing to explain on this is that currently as ATVs are manufactured, that there are, most ATVs will meet the ninety-two decibel limit. If you set the limit below ninety-two, it is possible that a good, a good chunk of the vehicles, ATVs, would not be able to meet that, and therefore would not be able to, to go through town. What that means is, if you have, if you're thinking about the local businesses, they're saying they don't have fleet that they can, right now can meet ninety-two, but any less than that, they'd, they don't have the equipment to trailer all of their ATVs to the trailheads. So at that point, you're potentially putting local business owners in a financial predicament. So that's what I'm gonna say, positives and negatives. I think a lower decibel limit would, would be better, but the disadvantage to that is you're gonna hurt some local businesses.
And to, like, further question, Lori, that regarding the local businesses, um, the, uh, how do I put this? Are we allowed by state code to, like, if we were to, to put the decibel at eighty-five? Is that, are we allowed to do that? Is that even a, an option on the table?
So, y- y- yes, and be, there's only two federal laws that preempt us, is the one on motorcycles. Right, so the EPA one that I talked about. There is an eighty-decibel limit on, uh, trucks over ten thousand pounds. So trucks over ten thousand pounds can't exceed eighty decibels at, measured at fifty feet, which is a different type of a test. But those are the only two federal preemptions that we have. If we make the rule for all vehicles, we don't have a problem with state law. Right, we just can't single out ATVs if we're making a decibel limit in our community. We can't just make it for ATVs, and we're not. We're making it for, for all vehicles. So the that's a longer answer to your question. Did I, did I answer it?
I just wanted to make sure the council was very, that it was very clear to the council that if we set a limit at eighty-five, we are allowed to do so. But then how force trailering to trailheads? Caitlin, go ahead.
So at a previous meeting, we discussed that there would probably be some, um, leeway, given the, um, the decibel meters, especially the less expensive kind, um, have a tolerance, and it might be two decibels, it might be four decibels, either side of the reading. So I'm wondering, if ninety-two is the target, should we actually, but the tolerance of the meters that we are likely to purchase is plus or minus three decibels, should it be? Les is shaking his head. I'm just using it as an example.
One.
One decibel?
Yeah, for the one you've purchased, you've purchased a very nice meter.
Okay, so then, in actuality, it would be above ninety-three decibels. So, so, back to Tony's question, based on the demonstration that Mike and I attended, um, ninety-two is typical of many ATVs on the streets. Maybe not the loudest, but they were plenty loud when they drove by at actual speed. But I'm willing to, I, I understand the concerns about not, um, penalizing people for, business owners for investments they've already made. But I also want to give residents at least some daylight hours in the evening to enjoy their yards without ATVs. So that's why I'm not okay with seven to ten. Additionally, the county ordinance, um, specifies a progression of, or a de- a decreasing, uh, decibel limits over the years, um, which makes it clear what the expectations of the community are. Ours doesn't. Um, and I realize that um, we could amend it on a yearly basis, but I would like to set that expectation that this is a starting point. We're willing to work with everyone's interests, but it's gotta get better.
Yeah, just to, to, to point out that a few factual points on that. There, there are, uh, uh, several models, the Polaris Razor one thousand and the Kawasaki K-Rack. Several models, the Polaris Razor one thousand and the Kawasaki KRX one thousand. That will not actually meet a ninety-two decibel limit. And so if you get to the point where you're decreasing the limit over time. I just want to be clear, you may be getting to a point where you're forcing everyone to trailer because the technology hasn't kept up with our decreasing decibel limits. So you can do what the county is doing and decrease the decibel limit year by year. It's just that the consequence of that is that you may be forcing more and more people to trailer if the. Different models, the decibels aren't coming down as they're being manufactured from year to year.
Laurie, that's not quite, good point, but it's not quite accurate. There's two other options besides trailering. A, they can drive slower, all right, that helps. And B, and B, they can.
Not on the tailpipe. That, this is a stationary test, so the driving slower doesn't affect the tailpipe test.
Yeah, but. Wait, I don't really care how, per se, I don't care how much they put in stationary test. What I'm concerned about is how noisy they are driving down the road. So I mean, the point is you could have. They could pass ninety-two, what am I trying to say? Well, forgive me. And the other option, you can, and they can put, they buy new stock every year. That's what Natalie told me, okay, Natalie and Scott. And so why, when they buy a new stock, they just buy it with better quality mufflers? Maybe it will cost them a little bit more, but it's not like they're going to go out of business.
Well, it certainly be cheaper, but I think what you were trying to say, Mike, is that why, like, if. If they exceed the ninety-two tailpipe, but they drive slower, they'll be less loud.
Correct, thank, correct, thank you.
Ronnie, Ronnie?
Um, I was gonna say, I can have sympathy and understand the need for a transition period. But I mean, when we met on March ninth and we were asked what, what. What, give us, give us a guideline for what people are looking for. We said, what we're hearing from people is they feel like they should not be louder than passenger vehicles. And I feel like we owe that to our community. We may not be able to get it immediately, but I'm not really willing to wait too long either. I mean, they didn't ask to have much louder things in their neighborhoods. And I'm just, I'm just repeating, that was their ask.
Well, and I just want to say that we effectively have also said that wouldn't it be nice if we could set a curfew? And so what this ordinance can do is essentially allow us to set a curfew. We get to pick the hours and outside of that curfew, trailering is required. We know that trailheads are not overflowing in the evening for sunset tours. We just have to decide where we want to be and we know that all of it is going to be some level of compromise. And so we started off the legislative session with this idea of eight to eight. It was quickly amended to be eleven to six. We, we all said eleven to six, that's not really going to help the noise. But the businesses were saying, well, sunset tours. Well, sunset tours might not be available to those that don't have trailers if we were to choose that. Eight to eight. So we, I think as a council need to say. Or each as an individual need to say, what do I want and kind of put it out there? And then we need to compromise as a council and then the ordinance reflects that compromise. And this is the last thing we talked about tonight. I think that's good. I don't know. Can we, do we think we can? Would you, council members, would you like just a week? Or, you know, too, I mean, I guess in our next council meeting, we'll, we'll do this, but I think Lori needs to hear back from us individually where our position is. And it's a very tough decision that you each have to make. But I do think we need to, you know, kind of find our center and then compromise with each other. What we're going to move forward with in terms of an ordinance. And then, you know, it's a majority game at that point where the majority of this council falls in terms of the ordinance. So, well, so Lori, what I want, I'm asking the council this question, like. Can we take, like, I feel like this is the critical, this is the meat of the sandwich, right? So can, how do you all feel about taking a week? Do your outreach, talk to people, find your center of where you feel like the ordinance should sit. And then when we come back and reconvene as a body, we hash it out and we find our compromise. Does anyone agree with that process? Council? Hold on. Council? Does that feel good?
I'm good with that.
Okay, because I mean, everything else like is negotiable, like we were saying, like playground equipment, musical instruments. You were right at the beginning of this, Mike, this, you know, let's just talk about vehicular noise. And really the crux is going to be whether or not sunset tours are going to need to trailer. Right? Or if we're going to go even deeper than that, or if we're going to be more generous than that. But let's find our individual centers and then be ready to, to negotiate. Okay, Les?
There's, yeah, there's just one more piece of information that I needed and Ronnie, it goes to your point. And, and that's really important is that you, you said, and I heard what you said back in the prior meeting, is that residents want this as quiet as, as passenger cars. And that's what we did for the nighttime hours. So I guess that's the feedback that I need from you all is that. We've, we've tried to achieve that. So we've tried to achieve a balance of. You know, not forcing the local businesses to go out of business and also making some progress towards noise restrictions during the day. But I, my understanding was that the nighttime hours were the, the real issue that residents were having. So I'd appreciate the feedback if the lower limits closer to passenger vehicles that your residents were talking about. Are they talking about nighttime hours or are they talking about all the time? Because if they're talking about all the time, then the consequence of that is that everyone needs to trailer.
Yeah, I was gonna, basically that was what I was going to say. In, in the short term, if you want quiet. The easiest way to achieve it is with time of day restrictions. The decibel limit of ninety-two, as Tony pointed out, will catch the worst offenders, but that's about it. And so, you know, in the, in the, in the short term, if you want to create. Time, you know, quiet periods, the best way to do that is with the time of day restrictions. To, to add to that, there's no reason that it has to be every night of the week. You could have Monday, Wednesday, Friday. You could have weekends differences so that. You can give people a chance so that they know that they can go on their deck on Wednesday and Fridays. And on their porch at those days and enjoy it. So that might be an option too.
Well, and I just caution this council to be consistent because I'm looking at our chief and he's such a good poker face. And I'm sure he's like, Monday, Wednesday and what? Like, that's a bear. Let's, let's remember that there is, there are consequences to this ordinance and it's the enforcement. And so I really, we've got to think about that as well.
One thing that I, I think we keep missing here is this ninety-two decibels or whatever we pick is for all vehicles. It's, we don't get to single certain vehicles out. And I know darn good and well, there are cars that drive around my neighborhood that are louder than ATVs. My mechanic friends say the kid pulled the muffler off and put a coffee can on his car. I don't think you can physically do that, but that's their rendition.
Yeah, Tony had, yeah, Tony, thank you. That's a good point. And Lori, in the original draft I sent you way back. I worded it so that it, I didn't have a ten thousand pounds business in it. But it, I worded it so that it included any other kind of noisy vehicles with certain exceptions. And that way the state legislature wouldn't jump on us for trying to discriminate against UTVs. So I don't see that language in here and I might suggest that once again, and we can consider that.
Can you tell us what the dec, Les, can you tell us what the decibel is for a Ford diesel newly?
No, I, I can't, I can't tell you that. The.
Nodge or a Chevy or whatever.
You know, like a, a typical automobile at that distance is going to be probably in the seventies. A, you know, pickups probably, you know, like what you're describing in, in the lower eighties, eighties.
So a big truck is eighty, so like even eighty?
A big truck, a, a large truck, like a semi truck will be.
Like, like a work truck.
Yeah, probably in the eighties.
Yeah. And, and Les, that's very consistent with the data that myself and one other guy on county council took, very consistent.
Yeah, that, that seems right.
So eighty-seven would capture most, I, I don't want to call it passenger cars, but, because I think. People's primary vehicles in town might be a work truck.
Yeah, oh yeah. A, a, a pickup truck should be able to pass eighty-five. If it's not modified, it should be able to pass eighty-five. I, I haven't measured some of the diesel ones, so I can't tell you for sure about them. But, you know, that's an empirical question we can get an answer to.
Okay, because I think to Ronnie's point. People use work trucks as passenger vehicles. So I don't think that. I don't think the expectation is to exclude them from conversations from council. But, okay, so, so it is nine forty-seven and I, I mean, we really have done a lot of work here. We know it's a layer cake and we got to take bites. So. Lori, what you have done to put this before us, to stimulate the conversation, to give us the points where we need to deliberate. Thank you so much. Like, I cannot share my gratitude enough. If it feels like we're getting heightened and frustrated and whatever, it's because we know how tough this issue is. And we know that among the councils, I look among the council, like, none of us are going to have the same answer as another. On how we want to approach this. And so we do need to hash it out as a council. And so we have homework. So the homework is. What, where would you like, if, if you were the decider and you didn't have to compromise, where would you sit in terms of your, your. Ordinance? And knowing that a noise ordinance, twenty-four hours a day of eighty-five or eighty-seven. Would force trailering of our recreation vehicles. That there, that we can, we can, we, it doesn't have to be twenty-four hours, that it can be certain timeframes. But then again, that would force trailering. And that of the community, of the companies that we have talked to, the hours that, that. I think the consistent hours that I've heard have been the, the, the six to ten. That, that incorporates, or sorry, seven to ten. Incorporates gearing up in the morning and, and, and still providing sunset tours. Also, we need to remember we have this event called Car Show that we probably want to consider exemptions. And that an event could be, you know, evening rides, that that could be. Something that we could write in, not, maybe not a Monday, Wednesday and Friday kind of thing. But perhaps something that maybe, you know, Brett, you could, Chief, you could, you know, advise us on this too. If we wanted to allow Saturday nights as night rides or if we wanted to have some kind of. You know, every first weekend or, or something like that, that's very clear and, and enforceable. That we could message.
We do have an exception for the special, for special permits, for special event permits. But we can make sure that ties into the noise ordinance as well. But you can get a special event permit to be exempt from the receiving land use noise provision.
Special event permit within the city?
Correct.
And so could we give a special event permit to a business to conduct sunset tours? That would be three sixty-five days a year.
I don't know. What do you, Joel's our expert on special event permits. What do you think?
I think that we need to take a week and work on this more and not talk about crazy hypotheticals at ten PM.
Well, all, all I'm doing, Joel, is laying out like, you know, so if a council member is saying like, well, I'd be okay with night rides on the weekend. You know, do we have a mechanism for enforcement for that, for ordinance and then enforcement for that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so then we just need to decide when we, when we want to see, what we want to see on the roads, right?
And then also we, we could just have a, a seasonality, like, I mean, because it sunset changes, obviously. So at the height of summer, I mean, it could be nine o'clock, but in, let's say in April, it's at six o'clock. I mean. Daylight savings time, I mean, that, that's a possibility as well.
That sounds like it's an enforceable thing. Yeah, because then what you do is set the decibel. At ninety-two at the time of day that you want to allow them and then you would set it at eighty-five at the time of day that you don't, right?
The, the problem with what we're doing is we don't have the rule and we're trying to find the exceptions. We don't know what the rule is and you can't find the exceptions to have the rules. So Karen makes an excellent point. But if the rule is that it's from seven AM to ten PM, well, sunset's at six, it doesn't matter because it's before ten PM, you don't need an exception. So until you know what the rule is, you can't find the exceptions.
Hey, Les, quick question for you. I asked Cliff Kuntzis, I asked the Chamber Commerce, didn't get an answer out of either one of them. Do you know of any reason why for an affordable sum of money, maybe a few hundred dollars according to Cliff? That your, your typical UTV can't be fitted with a significantly quieter muffler?
You know, that is not something that I'm really, the, I don't have much information on that, on the costs of, of. Doing these. Now technically, just from an acoustics perspective, you know, that's what acoustic experts do is they quiet things. And what they do is they put on silencers to quiet things. So the technology is definitely out there. But whether it is for each particular vehicle, I do not know.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we've got, we've got stuff to chew on. To be continued. What do we want our next meeting to look like? Council? Between now and our next meeting, we forward our, our preferred scenario to Lori. She come up with some recommendations of how we move forward, maybe like an A, B and C. Maybe we don't even have to. Maybe, maybe, maybe we're closer to each other than we think, maybe we're not. How does that sound? Forward recommendations to Lori? Yes? Yes, okay. And we're done for now. And that's that. And I'm going to move us along in the agenda unless anyone is just craving more conversation about this right now. Great. It's hard work. We are now at section eleven of our agenda, agenda, approval of the bills against the city of Moab. Tony, is there a motion?
The bills against the city of Moab in the amount of four hundred ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and seventy-six cents.
Thank you, Tony. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kaylin. Discussion? None? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Mike?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Kaylin?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Kaylin. Is there a second? Thank you, Tony. Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero and we're adjourned. Great work tonight, more to come. Thank you all for zooming.
Thank you, everyone.